April 27th, 5:30 PM. We have a closed session item. I'll ask that our city attorney announce the code.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you will be meeting in closed session for conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section 54957, public employee performance evaluation, and the position is city attorney.
Okay, and then can I get a roll call?
Mayor Perterm Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Dejornius.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wade will be participating by phone. And Mayor Tushant.
Here.
All present.
Robert Pledge.
Please stand, place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we'll go to public communications, written or verbal. I don't believe we have received any electronic communications. There's obviously no one in the room. Last would be if there's any callers. Do we have any callers?
No callers.
No callers. With that, we will move into closed session. All right, ready? Okay, so we'll start off by closing out a closed session. Chip, I'll let you do that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you held a closed session pursuant to government code section 54957 for public employee performance evaluation. Coming out of that, and there is nothing formal to report.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll begin the meeting for the regular meeting in solving city council. We have the regular meeting, April 27th, 2020, 6:30 PM. Can I get a roll call?
Mayor Perterm Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Dejornius.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Mayor Tushant.
Here.
All present.
Robert, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Yes, please stand, place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first, we'll start off with public communications, written or verbal. I believe we have one that came in that requested to be read into the record.
I don't have any on record that they requested.
Let me find it really quick.
Just turn it this way and I'll read it.
So while I find that, obviously, we have no one here physically in the room. But do we have any callers?
None right now.
We have zero callers. Okay, I found the one email that was requested to be written in. Okay.
A letter from the public to be entered into tonight's meeting. Dear Mayor, City Councilmember, City Manager, City Attorney of Solvang Retailers Association, we would like to share some of our appreciation and complaints about the city's energy tenant moratorium ordinance. Some landlords went beyond and offered free rents, some offered 50% discounts, and some of the others offered very long extended payment options to their residential to their residential or commercial tenants starting after the month of June. We all appreciate and are very thankful and God bless to those good-hearted landlords trying to help and understand and support their tenants. However, still, a few greedy landlords and their property managers are unfortunately still acting like nothing happened and pretending the city's emergency tenant moratorium ordinance does not exist at all. They keep bothering, insisting, pushing, forcing, and even threatening to get payment for the month of April rents from some of our stores shut down commercial tenant members. Some of our stores shut down commercial tenant members. Basically, those greedy and opportunistic landlords are forcing for immediate payment for the month of April rent. They say your April rent is due now, pay it now, or if you can't pay it, then leave, offering an exit from a longstanding lease. They refuse to accept our payment plan with existing moratorium terms. However, according to the city's emergency 60-day rent moratorium ordinance, deferred rent starts to be paid once an emergency term expires and then must be paid in six months. However, that is not acceptable to them, and they insist that we start paying rent now. And they do not accept City of Solvang's ordinance payback period of six months for deferred rents. We hope that the City of Solvang can give a stronger message with an official warning to those greedy landlords and their property managers about the city's emergency tenant moratorium ordinance meanings and conditions. We are thrilled to know the City of Solvang is already working on a second wave, solving emergency loan in greater amounts to act as Solvang's own PPP loan program. Solvang Retail Association is strongly supporting the idea of creating Solvang's own payroll and rent protection preferable as a grant, if not then as a loan program, which would be a better solution than the SBA's unavailable programs. Thank you for your dedicated work. This is from the Solvang Retailers Association.
Okay, thank you, Robert. A quick question for legal on that one. I know we did establish a moratorium. We had some limited discussion on it and adopted it, suggested by staff, I believe. And obviously, at that point in time, we didn't know how long the COVID shutdown would be happening. Is there any sense for one, putting on the next item for the council to at least have it there in case they intend to make any changes to that? Or number two, have there been issues that have come up that maybe the council should consider deliberating over?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've not heard any issues. I don't know if Xena has gotten any calls from anyone. You do need to take action on that ordinance if you want to extend it for another month. It expires at the end of May. And as I understand, it seems pretty likely that in fact, I think that the county gave us some additional rules that run through May. And so I think that we can expect that there's at least going to be some level of shutdown through May.
It's the same level of shutdown through May now.
Yeah, they extend it through May unless otherwise rescinded or if the state were to take action.
Exactly.
You know, things like that. But otherwise, it's looking like May will be shut as well.
It's looking like May will be shut as well. And again, your ordinance currently would expire at the end of May.
Okay. So I was just bringing that up only to see if there's anything that we should put on the next meeting to possibly deliberate over. I don't know what issues have risen up. I've gotten several emails myself, you know, whether it be landlord or tenant, obviously, it's an issue.
I've gotten more questions, so just trying to understand how it works from both tenants and landlords. So that might be something that we can maybe clarify today.
Yeah, to clarify that, what you did was you adopted a moratorium on evictions. And if a landlord attempts to move forward with an eviction, then your ordinance is actually then a complete defense for the tenant in the case of the attempted eviction, including the six-month pay period. So you would have to have a landlord who takes the step of attempting eviction. And I don't think anybody has reached that point yet.
So maybe we just sit on that one for now. With that, we'll move on to executive reports.
So I'll start with a brief city manager report. Just once again, reminding everybody about COVID-19 information resources. The best place to go is, once again, solvingresources.com. That has information for businesses as well as residents. And the second site is the official site for City of Solvang, where you can find information on how to contact Solvang staff during COVID emergency. This is the statistics that we have for County of Santa Barbara. As of today, we have had 471 cases of COVID. As you can see, Santinas Valley still remains at the five cases. We haven't had any new cases in our geographical area for quite a while. The County of Santa Barbara, as far as the number of cases, is somewhere in the middle of all counties of within California. I believe they're about number 15. So we're somewhere in the middle of how the state is doing overall as far as counties. As we have mentioned just now, County of Santa Barbara has issued a new order effective April 24, 5:00 PM, and it's going to be effective through May 31 unless anything changes. The order actually is requiring all the same restrictions as the previous orders. What it does in addition to that is provide a very specific list as to what businesses are essential, what kind of businesses can be opened, and with what kind of restrictions, what exactly the county means by social distancing, and then what businesses are considered nonessential. They have been working on this clarification since the original governor orders came out. It's now here. And at the same time, we're starting to talk about reopening. And what the County of Santa Barbara is doing is following the governor's six indicators. And they're going to follow the San Luis Obispo developed approach and partnering with this reach organization that will basically create a strategy for how the county could reopen and the economic strategy as well. So the first call is going to be tomorrow. We'll find out more tomorrow about how they're structuring this, who is actually on those calls, who's going to be part of that group and part of those discussions. So we'll look back to you more with any news on that after the call. Once again, announcements, you know, since we continue to be shut down for another month, continue not to flush anything that's not supposed to be flushed. Now, we had just to have a little bit of entertainment in Solvang. We had a visitor or a tourist over the weekend. That was a big bear. So this little guy here was parading the streets of Solvang. And there's his picture laying around. He was safely removed and is now somewhere in the wilderness away from Solvang. That's the only tourist we had.
Can we have him back?
Sure, we'll see how much TOT he can bring. Advanced calendar, COVID-19 will continue to be the first and foremost priority. We'll have an ordinance to do a modification to allow for outdoor sitting, so to continue to comply with what we would expect to be, you know, continued restrictions. Even as we begin to reopen, there will be probably most likely some kind of restrictions on spacing. So this ordinance would allow for that outdoor spacing. Also goes along with council general direction to expand outdoors and experiential tourism. Then, of course, we'll dive into the preliminary financial plan. Today, we have an agenda, just a brief discussion on a forecast. But the next time, you will actually have the entire budget prepared, and we'll be able to talk about the capital improvement program and all the programming budgets, including projects, contracts, et cetera. Then we have Veterans Call, specific site development. That project has been moving forward. There is actually a developer that is a new developer who bought the private parcel next to the wet soul, and he is very proactive in wanting to develop that. So that project will move forward, and will be brought to council to discuss next steps. And then we, of course, have the citywide economic development and opportunity zones as we begin to recover. We've also talked about the priority of wanting to diversify economy. And there is other additional sites to the wet soul that the council might consider for developing to both increase, you know, the property value itself of those parcels as well as TOT and sales tax for the city. And with that, we actually have on the consent agenda an item from Visit SIVV, their annual report. And so Shelby is supposed to be online to give us his usual presentation, as he always does for the City of Council, if he is present. So Shelby.
I'm here. Yeah? Do you see me?
Hi Shelby.
We see you.
Hey, everybody. So I'm going?
Yes, please.
Mayor Tushant, Solvang City Council. Thank you very much for having myself out to present the 2019 annual report for Visit the Santinas Valley. Crazy times. So let's pretend for a moment we're back in 2019. Everything is unreal. Everything is fantastic. 2019 was a great year. We had a great recovery year from the mudslides and the fires the year prior. So I'm just going to go over some key points. Hopefully, all had a chance to review the annual report that I submitted on Thursday. To begin, we were up in TBIT funding by almost 4%, 3.45%. Excuse me. So we are very proud of that. Also, we are funded by 33 lodging properties and 200 members that are a part of Visit the Santinas Valley, made up of hotels, restaurants, wineries, and activities. Folks that provide something for the visitors to do. With that, I'm going to give a brief, I'm going to share my screen if that's okay. See if that works. And do you see spirit of the Santinas Valley?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. So we had our annual meeting. And at that meeting, we presented the spirit of the Santinas Valley to three recipients. Part of our deal is that we have an education program where we hold seminars to teach the front-facing folks in the Santinas Valley about customer service and other things to do in the valley. And then annually, we reward the ones that are outstanding in that, that are great examples and ambassadors to the Santinas Valley. This past year in 2019, we awarded March Tea Painting with the Alice Hall Guest Ranch Resort, Giorgio Curdie Almiranto Catering, and Chef Pink with Route 246. Our year-long campaign was based on the world of, very proud and very successful campaign. We had the world of tastes, experience, smiles, and sunshine. Again, very, very successful. It was a great campaign. Public relations-wise, we focused not only on our regular feeder markets, which is, of course, Los Angeles, San Diego, and we're always trying for San Francisco, but we're really focused on our direct flight markets last year. Total value of our public relations media coverage for 2019 was over $5 million. Total circulation of that editorial coverage was $43 million, over almost 34, say, 44. And then a number of visitors for that editorial coverage in 2019 was over a billion of folks that were checking us out. The PR ad equivalency from 2018 was up 224%. We put out our destination guide. As usual, we print 95,000 copies of this guide that represents each of our communities and all it has to offer. We do direct mailings to several zip codes in Southern California. And then they are distributed at visitor centers in the tri-counties as well as the airport and in all of our hotels, of course. Restaurant weeks, 2019, so the first inaugural of restaurant weeks. The years prior, it had been one week, and we expanded to two weeks. And again, incredibly successful. It was, I think we had 30, over 34 participants this past year. And the media coverage was through the roof, highly successful. We had the inaugural Taste of the Santinas Valley. Very proud of this one. It was a four-town, I'm sorry, four-day, six-town event that took place from Thursday through Sunday in the Santinas Valley. We had over 1,300 attendees overall. And this was just after a few months of advertising. So really proud of how this went off. We also partnered with the City of Solvang. And we did, we handled the Great Stop this year. Again, very successful. We had over 475 attendees for that afternoon in Solvang. And yeah, very proud of that. We appreciate the respect and we're honored that Solvang worked with us to make that happen. Big picture takeaways, overall clicks and overall, we were up in the clicks to book in VisitTheSantinasValley.com. Our organic traffic, direct traffic, mobile referral traffic of 74%. Sessions were 14% and 7% longer. The sessions for each of our outside markets, that is a big goal of ours, San Francisco up 2%, San Diego up 28.6%, Irvine 53, New York 27. Phoenix, which is one that we plan on attacking hard this year, might have to hold off till next year, but Phoenix was up 82%. And then the PR equivalency again was from the prior year was up 224%. We had the privilege of presenting at Visit California's headquarters, where the 70 attendees, 70 employees plus 20 dignitaries that were visiting at the time were there for our hour and a half, two-hour presentation, where we made the distinction between the Santinas Valley and the coast of Santa Barbara. And we'd be are actually the wine region for Visit the County. And again, it was a lot of fun, and we had a great time there establishing our brand, the Santinas Valley within Visit California. Grants and special projects. As you know, again, part of our contract is to provide to the community to support events that happen in our valley with marketing dollars. And we also do charitable donations and community development, such as the Christmas tree and other things. Total given out in 2019 was 68,315. And that is it on the shared screen. So I'm going to stop that. And those are the big highlights. Again, it was an incredible year. We, as you see in the report, we premiered a commercial, which I love the show, but Sam doesn't go on shared screen. And then the taste amazing was incredible and really excited. One other thing to note regarding 2020 is we just put together a revised budget. You'll see that in the last page of the annual report. We knocked off a lot of money, over 200,000 expected loss in TBIT. And it's a living document. You might have to go back and restructure that again. But we knocked down a lot of our marketing dollars, and we cut everything so that hopefully we can make it through the year. And we are excited. And then three marketing campaigns that we are working on right now that are all different, but that will run simultaneously as soon as we're given the go at to invite people back to the Santinas Valley. And I'm available for questions.
Question? Thanks for coming on. What kind of conversations have you had with the hotelers in Los Alamos and Solvang and the area? What are you hearing? What are they saying? I know that, like, for example, at, and God bless and rest his soul, Larry Sarlous, there are some people staying at the Hampton Inn. There's a few people staying at the Marriott. What are you hearing? Are people staying in any of the hotels right now?
Absolutely. The freeway hotels are doing fine. But as you know, you've only got a few, three, maybe four hotels open in Solvang. It may be two now. So the ones that are open are doing okay. That's because they can stay open. But we only have the Victoria Mansion that are open, that's open in Los Alamos. Very unique hotel. And then there's nothing open, you know, only one hotel property in Los Alamos. There's nothing open there. And there's nothing in Santinas at this time. So it's just a couple in Solvang and mostly built in because it's along the freeway.
Got it. Thanks, Shelby.
Just to extend on that question really quick. Do you know what the average occupancy rate is for the hotels that are actually, you know, still open?
That are still open currently? I do not know. But it's something I'd be happy to find out for you.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, Shelby, help me understand, why is it that some hotels are remaining open and they're operating, and others are not? What's the criteria for staying open?
Well, it's, there you know, they are essential workers. So it's an essential business for workers, for first responders, for firefighters, for, you know, folks that need, that can do staycations. A lot of hotels have converted over to be offices so that if you don't want to work from home, you can rent out a room for the day as your office. It's financial, I believe. It's those who think that they can, they're going to have occupancy worth staying open for, Chris. Or
So it really comes down to the business owners themselves making that decision?
Yes, sir. 100% is.
It just seems to me that the idea that I'm sorry, this is a half-baked idea, and I don't want to get in trouble by saying something people may find offensive. But the bottom line is, I find that hotels are doing just fine, and they should stay open. And they know how to distance and all that kind of stuff. I'm just greatly troubled by the arbitrary manner in which we have decided who's essential and who's not, and how they should operate. That's, I don't, I think this government, the state and the county, has gone overboard in the extreme in some of the things that they've been doing and saying.
If I could add, this is a whole separate topic, but there is a tremendous groundswell here in Solvang. There's Facebook pages, there's, you know, Alan Jones had to pull down his honk sign because he couldn't get any work done. There's a tremendous push for getting Solvang open with social distancing. And we're just, our hands are kind of tied right now, and it's very frustrating. I wish it was left up to individual responsibility. But then again, then you're being accused of trying to kill old people. So it's a really, really, really tough time right now.
I guess we'll talk about this more in another agenda item. Thanks, Shelby.
Thanks, Shelby.
Are there any other questions to Shelby's report? Okay, thank you, Shelby.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Be well.
You too.
So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have items A through H. Is there any item that the council wishes to poll?
I think we should, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to it.
F?
Probably F, yeah.
F? Are there any others? I'll move that we accept A through H and poll item F for separate discussion.
I'll second the motion.
It's been seconded?
Mayor Perterm Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Dejornius.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Wade.
Yes.
Mayor Tushant.
Yes. Passes 5-0. Move on to item number F. City Attorney to move that we appoint an ad hoc committee on developing cost control methods and budget recommendations regarding the legal costs for the city.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? We should probably appoint individuals.
Clarify who?
Okay, so we have general consensus for that motion. Who do we want to recommend that we appoint to that?
Daniel and you.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say Daniel and mine.
Perfect. Yeah.
All right, so I'll amend the motion to include appointing Daniel and myself.
And I'll second the amended motion.
It's been seconded.
Mayor Perterm Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Dejornius.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Wade.
Yes.
Mayor Tushant.
Yes. Is there anything else on that item? Oh, and I'll make a separate motion to approve the invoices.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Chris.
Mayor Perterm Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Dejornius.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Wade.
Yes.
Mayor Tushant.
Yes. Okay, anything else on that item? All right, so we'll move on from the consent agenda on to item number four. Calpers unfunded liability policy direction and consultant contract approval. Staff report.
All right, so I'm going to first check if we have our consultants online. We should have Joel and John. Do we have you with us? All right, perfect. So I'll kick this off first and just talk about a little bit of the history and where we are. The council had directed staff over the past year to look into unfunded liabilities. The city has two buckets of major unfunded liabilities, one being the Calpers and one being OPEB. Calpers being the larger one at $5.3 million as of June 30, 2018 valuation. Primarily, the unfunded liability is Primarily, the unfunded liability is there due to the market laws during the Great Recession, as the council has been briefed on before. The council has inquired about termination and exiting Calpers plans. And the research has shown that based on evaluations, if the city council wanted to exit Calpers, they could pass a resolution. However, then Calpers would require a one-time payment to exit at their termination liability. They use a very protective for themselves discount rate when they determine this, as low as about one-point-five percent versus the seven percent that is base, which is the basis of our evaluations. So if the council was to decide to just exit the term, with a termination liability and pay off Calpers, we would be looking at about seventeen million dollars payment to Calpers. Of course, that does not even include the COVID-nineteen impact, which is significantly larger than the Great Recession. I only have data here that's a little bit outdated. As of March twenty-second, the Calpers had lost sixty-nine billion dollars, and that's on overall funded basis of four-hundred billion. So it's, it's a huge change in their market position. And even though their current position has been that they are not going to make policy changes and change the discount rate from seven percent, as you would recall, in about twenty-sixteen, they had taken the major policy change that significantly increased payments for Calpers throughout the cities in California, where they went from seven-and-a-half percent to seven percent. Payments were doubling for all cities to twenty-four, twenty-five, the standard kind of approach that the League of California Cities and most cities in California had adopted during that time and until this time as well, was to kind of use these strategies to either prepay unfunded liabilities to Calpers directly. So that's giving money directly to Calpers. Of course, it then goes into Calpers. You have no longer any control of that money and it's really all dependent on, you know, their actuarial assumptions. So if you do not believe that the plan is actually going to earn seven percent that their actuarial assumptions are based on, then of course, you're not exactly paying off your unfunded liabilities, even if you pay off the entire unfunded liability payment as of the last valuation. Another strategy was to form a pension trust fund. Pension trust fund, you can invest with the same risk as Calpers, but, and you can set money aside for pension directly in that fund. It would be specifically for pensions. You can draw from those funds during budget times to pay for pensions to Calpers. So it's a tool that creates a little bit of a cash management, better tool than just giving money to Calpers, but it doesn't resolve the problem of unfunded liabilities either. Another tool was to negotiate with unions, ask unions or the employees to actually pay in more towards the employer contribution. And then the last one is issue a pension obligation bond, which is risky obviously because you're taking on another debt to pay off this debt. And then if you're not actually resolving the structural issues, then you're not getting ahead. So the council has been asking to seek alternative approaches, which really address future unfunded liabilities as well. So COVID-nineteen is a perfect example of, even if the city was to have paid off our unfunded liabilities from reserves of five-point-three million dollars, there is no way that we wouldn't be incurring new unfunded liabilities right now with COVID-nineteen. We'll just have to wait and see on the actual numbers, actual evaluations. But if you just look at the number of losses and then losses in assets, we know there will be more. And we know that the fund will not be able to sustain it without coming to our agencies asking for more funds to put into Calpers. So with that, we reached out to Joe Nation, who is with Stanford University. I will let him introduce himself with all of his titles. And then we also have John Holtzman, who is an attorney who specializes in this issue. And so we would be talking to him about advice specifically on Calpers issue. So with that, I will turn it over to Joel and John to give a little bit of overview about yourselves and what you can offer for the city.
Joe, John, can I do a quick intro on the numbers? So my name is Joe Nation. I am in my thirteenth year teaching at Stanford. I teach in the public policy and human biology programs. I teach a number of different courses, health policy, a California class. And I also, and a couple of others, and I run a site called pensiontracker.org, which you may have used. And that is, has fairly detailed data on every agency in the state, either Calpers or CalSTRS members. There are about thirty-four-hundred agencies that are on pensiontracker.org. We, we just are about to update twenty-eighteen, and you're probably saying, well, why are you just updating twenty-eighteen when it's twenty-twenty? And that's because there's always a big lag, as you know, getting data from Calpers. And I've spent, I guess I've been working on this issue specifically for about ten years now. It all started when a group of graduate students did a project for Governor Schwarzenegger, whom I met, I was in the State Assembly from two thousand, two thousand and six. And he kept coming to us saying, what's the real number? What's the real math? And so that's essentially what this team of students did, and that's what I've been doing since then. The, I, I'm not the lawyer, I'm not the strategist per se, although I know the politics relatively well. And so what I'm suggesting that I can do, if it works for you, is to sort of, you know, tell the, the number side, the story, to tell the financial side, sort of where you've been, how you got here. Talk a little bit, and in particular, to be able to work with people or talk to people, have conversation with people in your community, so they understand the severity of the problem. And I'll just give you one example here. So I was just looking at some Calpers numbers again today. And you probably see these statements that Calpers puts out, and they say, well, we're, we're doing okay. You know, we, in the last twenty years, we've had this rate of return, thirty years, this rate of return, et cetera, and we're doing just fine. It's higher than the seven percent that we assume today. And what they are not telling you is that they've missed their target virtually for a couple of decades now. And in fact, the, because it, it did not use to be a seven percent discount rate or assumed rate of return, it was at, at one point as high as eight-point-seven-five percent. So when you do the math on that, you actually find out that Calpers has underperformed by almost two percent, about one-point-seven percent over the last twenty years. And when you're underperforming at one-point-seven percent on that rate of return, it blows a big hole in the, in, in your liabilities office here, creates a big liability for you. I've done this for a number of other cities, special districts, counties out there. It really depends on the level of detail that you're looking for. My suggestion would be a fairly short summary that sort of, you know, tells the history, looks at a few years. I, I can, I work with an actuary who can actually do an actuarial analysis, if that's something you're interested in doing. That's more complicated, it's more detailed, it's more expensive, et cetera. So anxious to hear thoughts from the council members and the mayor on what you are thinking.
No.
I think probably let's have John jump in, introduce yourself and talk about what you could do for us.
Very happy to. So my name's John Holtzman, founding partner of Rainy Public Law Group in San Francisco. I spent about thirty-three years in the public law arena. A good bit of it, well, a lot of having to do with labor issues in general, but, but in particular, focused on Calpers and pensions and other structural issues for, for cities. So I did, among other things, I did the labor side of pension side, OPEB side of the Stockton and Belay of Bankruptcies, and tend to focus on, hate to say it this way, but, you know, fiscal distress issues a lot and sort of lays out, lays through fiscal distress. Also, not, not, I should say, to be clear, most of my clients don't go bankrupt. The, so Fresno was an example of one of my client, longtime clients that is not going bankrupt and that were able to, to, to pull out. So the thought, and Joe and I linking up for this project, is, you know, I have a fair amount of expertise in everything from, I just, just negotiated for slow, slow RTA withdrawal from Calpers. So I actually have some very fresh experience of withdrawal issues and the moving parts involved in, in that. But I also have a lot of experience around, you know, other ways to skin the cat, so to speak, whether it be through JPAs or for, through fiscal emergencies, et cetera. I've worked a great deal on, on particularly on fiscal emergencies. And so, you know, the thought on, on, on my end at least, is to, you know, basically offer our services to, in conjunction with Joe's, you know, leadership on the financial side, to develop options for the city. And, you know, kind of a way of, I know you guys have thought about a lot of options, so I, you know, I'm aware that you're, you know, sophisticated group, spend a lot of time on that. But, you know, try to, try to develop ways of thinking about how to move the ball forward and what are the, you know, what are the things that are best, you know, best avenues. I would say also that we employ Dane Hutchins, who if you're involved in all of the League of Cities, you know that Dane is, was the League of Cities' great expert on Calpers and left, he's a lobbyist, but left fairly recently to start our Sacramento office, not a lawyer, and, and works, you know, quite a bit with them and is very familiar with sort of inner workings of Calpers and how, you know, what's, what's possible and what may be possible. I would say, you know, based on his involvement, I believe that Calpers is going to come down with a set of new options for cities that are in stress. I don't know what they're gonna look like yet. No idea. But, you know, this, this could be an opportunity, I mean, you, you know, obviously you're, you have a terrible fiscal distress problem because of the hotel industry right now. I realize that. But this could also be a real opportunity with this crisis to come upon a solution that's not as bad as having to pay the hugely enhanced unfunded liability amount calculated at this very, very low interest rate. So, so I think there may be some options there. I don't know yet. And obviously, there may be legislative options to put out more as well. So our, our focus tends to be to try to not just give advice, but give you actionable avenues that we can actually do. And so we broke the proposal into two halves. One is sort of report, which is really intended to be reasonably short, but give you, you know, lay out what the financial stuff that Joe's gonna do and the options. And then the other, you know, should you find an option to be attractive, I want to pursue it, whether it be a fiscal emergency or giving Calpers a notice of withdrawal, which would give you a year, force them to give you an estimate of what the withdrawal cost could be, et cetera, and also give you a year to figure out whether you want to withdraw from Calpers at some point. It's a non-binding resolution. You know, these are the kinds of options that, that we explore.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Questions to staff report?
Of the staff report or the gentleman?
Altogether.
Well, unfortunately, we do need to do this analysis. And I can't think of a better way than to hire these guys to help us frame the discussion and look through some of the potential strategies and solutions. I mean, I think we've all talked about this enough to know that Calpers is a, is a mess. I mean, I'd be happy to go through all the reasons why I think it's a mess, but that'd be kind of a redundant thing. So my, my, as far as questions for the gentleman, I'd like to hear a little bit more about what they did for the county of San Luis Obispo. I think, what was the RTA?
Yes.
What they call it. I'd like to hear more about that particular project and how they were able to move them out of Calpers. I'd like to hear more from Joe Nation about the future of Calpers, so that we're all really clear that this is a really messed up situation. He, I think he used a wonderful baseball analogy, and I'd like him to go back and explain that to us again.
So I'll, I'll take the RTA piece and then, and then, and the other to Joe. So RTA was a very, I'm sorry, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. So RTA was a very different situation than you're facing. RTA ended up essentially having to withdraw for some complex reasons, having to do with mistakes that were made earlier. And basically, the cost of, of not withdrawing would have been immense in a lot of ways. So, so it was, what, what RTA actually did is they did pay the, the termination amount. Were able to negotiate some aspects of the termination amount with, with Calpers. But unlike what you would probably be looking at, they were actually taking their folks into, the county, Slow County has its own pension system, independent pension system. So they were, they actually pulled their folks out of Calpers, but, but into another pension system. So a little, a little bit of a different circumstance and different, you know, different puts and takes from a cost perspective, you know. But we did end up paying the termination amount. We did pay it though, we did negotiate payment over a number of years. And, you know, my sense is honestly, Calpers is moving to a very interesting perspective right now. And I don't know if they're actually gonna go there or not, but I think they are. They are, I think increasingly feeling that cities that can't pay for Calpers probably should get out of Calpers, which has not been their perspective historically. And so I think what you'd be looking for here, and, you know, and this is a little bit of, maybe sort of three months ahead of ourselves in terms of these options really developing, is, you know, whether Calpers may actually create a route out, which is not nearly as painful as they existed.
You think, you think Calpers would negotiate that?
What's that?
You think Calpers would negotiate?
I, I do. I mean, I, you know, how much they'll negotiate remains a question. And I think it turns a lot on your financial condition, which I understand right now is, you know, abysmal in terms of what's happening with, with your revenues. But obviously, you know, it's more complicated than that. I know you have good reserves, et cetera. So, so, you know, yes. I mean, the, the concept at least would be to try to reach some kind of negotiated resolution, maybe. And again, that's, you know, it's a bit of a long shot, because I don't think that they, well, I, I mean, we all know that the issue is that the interest rate they are offering for the termination pool is actually, is actually low relative to what they can get in fixed income products. So there are issues there. I don't know though, given this whole disaster that we're facing right now, that's, that Calpers is gonna be all that flexible about it. Because quite frankly, they're not gonna be getting three percent in their regular pool this year. I mean, Calpers is on the inside predicting, you know, a loss this year. So, so we'll see. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's the concept, is that there's a potential to negotiate in some manner. That's one approach. Another approach is really, can you, and I know you've been reducing your headcount, can you further reduce your headcount through JPAs or other things, so that we're effectively buying time to, to pay down the unfunded liability at the existing or probably slightly reduced discount rate? You know, I mean, so there are a variety of different strategies, as short of it. And I, at this point, I don't, I'm not ready to, you know, say which one is gonna be the best approach. But that, the idea is to sort of... But that, the idea is to sort of explore that and figure out how you can make the work fair.
Thanks, John. May I go ahead and answer?
Respond?
Please.
Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Thank you. So, I, I want to be clear about one thing, and that is that I believe that CalPERS is a better agency than it was 20 years ago. But I also believe that the hole that they are in is so deep that all the goodwill in the world that is coming from some of the new folks, both staff and board, isn't enough to, to right the ship, to, to fix this situation. And House Member DeJernis, to, you know, said, you know, what does the future hold? And we don't know what the future holds, but we, you know, we can make some projections and assumptions and so forth. And we do know what the past looks like, at least for CalPERS. And so, CalPERS, using their math, their assumptions, their economic assumptions, their actuarial methods and so forth, 20, 25 years ago would have said, we're more than 100% funded, everything is just fine. And of course, then, the state legislature, before I was there, I didn't vote for it.
And Gray Davis.
Gray Davis, Gray Davis, you know, if you talk to him and talk to, you know, people close to him, he will, you know, he might say publicly that he felt as though he owed labor a lot because remember, this was the first governor and 16, Democratic governor in 16 years. And so, Gray Davis gave away a lot and the legislature gave away a lot. It wasn't just Gray Davis, I think it was, all but seven of the 120 assembly members and senators voted for this expansion with said bill as 400 in 1999.
Remember it.
Two years later, cities followed and sort of blew things up. And, you know, one of the reasons that that occurred is because people didn't fully understand the precarious nature of the position that they were in. So again, they were about 100% funded, and that's just assets divided by liabilities. And then that fell in the early 2000s with the, you know, dot com bubble bursting. And then, you know, moved down slightly. And then, of course, in the great recession, fell pretty dramatically down to, in the 60s, 60% funded. And what's, what's really remarkable, I think, about the CalPERS financial journey and performance since 2000, let's say 10, so the last 10 years, is though, even though, I mean, and even with this recent decline in the market, you know, the S and P 500 is up, you know, 300% basically over where it was. Yet the CalPERS funded ratio before this downturn, the last six weeks or so, only got up to 70%. So they only climbed back to 70, even though we've had a stock market that's been on fire. And I did some numbers, I looked at some numbers earlier today.
Don't, don't forget the bond market. The bond markets were on fire, the stock markets were on fire, come, everything was on fire. I don't, I don't know how to explain CalPERS' amazing ability to lose money in a stellar market that went on for more than 10 years.
Enron comes to mind.
Sorry, Joe, please continue.
Part of what happened, or part of what's happening, I should say, is that because there's been this refusal to look, well, actually, I'll say, not a complete refusal, because there's PEPRA now, some reduced benefits, but there's largely been a refusal to look at the benefit side of this. And so if you don't look at the benefits, and the benefits aren't sustainable with your investment strategy, then the only thing you can really do is, and this is the baseball, baseball analogy, you know, you're, you're way down in the bottom of the ninth, you're four runs or five runs behind. And the only thing you can really do, if you've got one or two outs, is swing for the fences, hope you get a homerun or two and somehow tie the game. And I would argue that, to a great extent, CalPERS, and not just CalPERS, but a lot of pension systems are doing this now, where they're, they're, they're putting money into riskier and riskier assets that might actually result in that homerun, but are more likely to make things worse. And, and, and I remember the first discussion I had with an actuary friend of mine, and I said, that's got to be the dumbest strategy that I could imagine. And he said, they have no other option. This is all they can do. And so if you, you know, if you, if you work through the math and you do some, you know, scenario analysis and some Monte Carlo simulations, and you can sort of see the probability of the outcomes, you would come to the conclusion that things are probably going to get worse before they get better. So that today, I'm guessing 64, 65% funded ratio of CalPERS might dip even further. And, and I, I should emphasize that those numbers I just cited, the 64, 65%, are based on CalPERS assumptions. That assumes 7% rate of return every year forever. And, and again, they've assumed that for the last 20, 30 years, and they've been missing it pretty consistently over time. And there's no reason, I believe, if you, you know, and I'm not a, I'm not a stock market guru, I'm not an investment analyst per se, but I'm smart enough to sort of, to, to understand what the market is, what, what the market looks like and what's realistic and what's not. So, you know, I, I think it makes sense, in particular, given what, what John has said, that, you know, CalPERS may be a little more interested in negotiating at this point. I, I do think there will be a time, there will be a time when the leadership in Sacramento, both in CalPERS and the legislature, will look at this and say, we have to do something. This is not sustainable. We've known it's not sustainable for a long, long time. But, you know, but the current crisis that, that not just you, but everyone is in right now is going to force a second law.
Yep.
So, in your estimation, what is the, the proper understanding of the funded ratio for CalPERS? In terms of your analysis? I, I know it's not, I know it's not the 65 to 70% that they say. What do you think the funded ratio really is at CalPERS?
Well, so I just did this today, and if you, if you discount as we do at a 20-year treasury rate, which is very low, but that's what a financial economist would do. The number I came up with today for CalPERS was 29%.
So there, would, would you?
And I'm, I'm not suggesting that's, that that's the right number. But if you were, if you were doing this, again, as a financial economist would do this, you would come up with about 30% funded, roughly half of the number that they would report.
So do you believe it's below 55% funded ratio?
I believe that a, a realistic assessment puts it below 55, yes.
Can I ask one more question too? You were, Joe, you were a Democrat Assemblyman in California, and you just mentioned that the legislature in Sacramento is going to have to do something about this. And do you really believe that? That they would really have the, the backbone to do something about that? Yeah, I mean, you were amongst that group.
It is, you know, I have conversations with some folks up there that I know. I've had, you know, across the board and leadership. I had, had one actually had dinner with a, a number of members of the Senate about a year or so ago. And I was actually pleasantly surprised to hear that these members, and I think they were all Democrats, because it was a Bay Area, yeah, together.
You can be anywhere, yeah.
But, yeah, but those, but those, all, all of those Senate Democrats surprised me in saying, we know we have to reform this, we know this is not sustainable. And, you know, the question that they always ask or what they say is, how do we make that happen? And I, I do think we're at a point where, you know, because people are starting to say no to new taxes, and people are, you know, voters are starting to say, wait a minute, why are we, why are we putting more and more money into pensions without reforming them when you're laying off teachers at my kid's school? So, you know, there, at some point, there, there will be a tipping point. I don't know how close we are to that. It probably depends on how severe this economic downturn is. You know, one of my colleagues at Stanford is saying that he doesn't think that this, that we will recover from this for several years. I don't know if I agree with that, but he's a smart guy, knows the macroeconomy really well. And there will be a tipping point. There will, will be a point, soon, you know, sooner rather than later, where the legislature will have to act on this. Because if they don't, it will devour everything else in the budget. And, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm still a Democrat, I've always been a Democrat, but I always like to say that I'm a Democrat who can do math. And, you know, the math is pretty clear, and the facts are pretty clear. And unless we, you know, unless we as a state, and not just California, because it's worse in some other states, but unless, unless we take this on and have serious discussions. And the last thing I'll say is that, you know, in the 10 years I've been working on this at Stanford through Pension Tracker, I've had discussions with folks from the labor side. And, you know, I am a former labor union representative. Back when I was in college, I was a labor union rep. And I, I believe that, that people who are, you know, that people who are, work in particular in cities and counties and special districts around the state of California ought to be concerned about the long-term viability of CalPERS. Because it's clear, and John knows this much better than I do, but it seems clear to me that, you know, the bankruptcy option, the nuclear option, is something that more and more cities may have to consider. And given the, you know, the law that exists and the rulings that John knows much better than I, it certainly suggests that cities can treat, you know, can find ways to walk away from that obligation or to reduce that obligation. If I were, if I were a CalPERS beneficiary in a, you know, again, in California, in a city, a county or a special district, I think I'd be looking for something else that would guarantee me a higher probability of actually getting that pension check. And I, at some point, again, there'll be a tipping point on that side as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'm pretty clear about what I think we should do. I, I think that Joe and John have laid out an opportunity for this council to explore different strategies for dealing with the problems that CalPERS has created for us. The city doesn't have the tax base to try and recapitalize the losses that they created and keep creating. I don't think this COVID issue is going to go away anytime soon, and we're probably going to see another black swan event of some kind that will take the market down. And who knows what happens to CalPERS at that point in time? All we know is that they are well below the 55% funded ratio. And my understanding is, once they fall below 55%, they simply cannot grow their way out of this. They're going to come back to the cities and demand more money from us as they've done since the last recession, and we don't have it. And I, I don't, I, for one, I'm not excited about going and talking to the residents about increasing taxes so we can support 40 retirees. I mean, the entire equation is broken. They don't, and they've proven over and over again, they don't know how to invest money. Everyone in the world seems to be doing better than they are. Why don't they just buy the indexes and walk away and go home? Anyway.
Put it all in red.
Yeah. That's pretty much what they're doing.
I know.
Would it make a difference if we, if we banded together with other cities or other districts, as far as that's concerned, to, to do some sort of conglomerate plan with them? Would we get better negotiating power or anything of the such if 15 cities came to them and said, this is what we're, we're looking to do? I mean, otherwise, it sounds like to me, some of these cities are just going to say, all right, we'll just use bankruptcy and we'll get out of it, you know?
Well, for example, let me ask, what did the, what, what, what was the end result in Stockton when they went through that with their pension?
John?
Please do.
So Stockton, Stockton made an interesting decision that I actually think made a fair amount of sense. Stockton had two major liabilities. It had a huge OPEB liability, really huge, and it had a huge pension liability. The difficulty that Stockton faced was with respect to the pension, if, if it were to take on the pension liability, it had a couple of problems. One was, the law at that point was still very unsettling, and CalPERS was fighting very, very, very hard to, and the entire budget, very expensive. So it was going to be extraordinarily expensive taking CalPERS through that entire process. The law has been, by the way, somewhat clarified, well, actually, we ended up clarifying the law fairly well in Stockton, but, but more so in Detroit. So that was issue one. Issue two was that it was relatively easy for us to essentially discharge the liability on OPEB, which was huge, and, and leave the pension intact, which from a competitive perspective was preferred by policymakers in Stockton, because they still have to recruit cops. And the issue that they were concerned about is that, that if they were offering a lesser pension than other cities, that they would have a great deal of trouble recruiting cops. They already had trouble recruiting cops, even then. So, the decision was, because retirement health benefits are very, very uneven in different places. A lot of places have no retirement health benefits. Others have very, have very generous retirement health benefits. That from a commercial perspective, it made more sense to leave the pension alone and go after the OPEB liability.
And we have an OPEB problem as well, right?
We do.
I think to Daniel's point.
Yeah, that's, just, just to make it clear, that presentation that Xena gave earlier was only one area of our CalPERS, or one system, right? There's, but there's several.
Right, it was on the pension side, not on the health side.
There's several unfunded liability retirement programs that we, unfunded liabilities that we do have in different retirement plans.
Well, there's two major, well, actually, yeah, two major ones. We have, you know, the, there's two plans that are active on retirement side, which is the classic and the PEPRA. And the PEPRA so far has been basically fully funded. Of course, I think that's going to change with this COVID-19. The $5.3 million comes from that classic plan, that's the older plan, that has most of the retirees that, you know, lost the most of the assets during the great recession. Then, of course, we have OPEB, which is post-employment health benefits, which has an unfunded liability of about $2.1 million. So, and I understand that, you know, we kind of focused this contract and proposal and discussion around CalPERS today, because that's where we started talking with Joel and John, and that's really the more complicated one. But John actually also has expertise in helping us with the OPEB liability as well. So.
Yeah, we've litigated a number of major cases in the California Supreme Court on OPEB liability, and in fact, and for that matter, on, on pension vesting as well. In fact, the Alameda case, which is going to be argued, and I want to say next week, is, is, is one of our cases.
Well, I certainly believe that there are alternative investments that could replace CalPERS and OPEB. And I think we'd like our, our consultants to look into those as well, as an alter, or at least open the door to explore those alternative investments. But getting back to Daniel's point, which I thought was an interesting one, how do we work with other cities to let people in Sacramento know, we're, we can't do this anymore? And that's one way. I think Joe Nation was talking about this. I think it requires political, political courage in Sacramento, which they simply lack. So I don't see that happening. Secondly, I think you make an interesting observation. That is, if the city of solving were to join with the local communities, like Bilton and others, through joint powers, you know, authorities for water or wastewater, maybe we can change the, the way, change, I don't want to say, I, I want to be careful about how I say this, but I think we can find ways to more cost-effectively produce water and, and manage wastewater without having to add to our headcount with respect to CalPERS. And we'd be able to reduce it by combining the administration and, and cutting overhead, that kind of thing. Does that make sense, Daniel? Is that what you were talking about? Because we were already moving in that direction.
Yeah, more specifically, yeah, more specifically, CalPERS. I was just wondering what, I mean, has any other city tried to do exactly what we are doing? I mean, do we have experience with other cities that, that's? with other cities that, that say they're not in financial straits? Because obviously, we, we do have reserves. We are, we're not in horrible condition right now. But has another city gone through this? Have they tried to do this? Are we the first city in California that's hired you guys to actually come up with this plan? Are we just, you know, that's what I'm wondering?
At least on my end, I would say you're the first city that is, you know, potentially hiring us to pursue a termination strategy based, you know, not on some other, other factors, but specifically on, you know, the infirmity of the, of the Calpers system. Yes, I think you, I think you probably are. You know, again, you know, Stockton, Vallejo, we looked at this, so it's not likely you're the first ones who've looked at it.
Well, actually, Joe, John, I'm going to interrupt you. Didn't you say that Corder Madera and Larkspur and some of those other communities are doing something similar?
Well, no, what they're doing is, yes, on the JPA side, yes. So Corder Madera and Larkspur are looking at a different strategy, which is this, what I'll call the mega JPA strategy. And strategy I like a lot. So Corder Madera is, they're a client, we're, we're city attorney, Corder Madera. So Corder Madera is already in two JPAs, as I think you're in a number, well, a police JPA, a fire JPA with the surrounding jurisdictions. What Corder Madera and the surrounding communities are now looking into is what I'm coming to call a mega JPA. We are hired to look at that. And so the idea there would be that you really take, you know, a significant amount of the remaining services that the city has and create a pool, you know, where you provide, you know, so you only need one head of public works, you know, you only need one head of-
So at the bare minimum, we need to connect with each other.
That, that question's come up a number of times to me over the last several days. And that's an issue, you know, there's a overarching nonprofit that works with county food banks, and that's, we used to call it Second Harvest, now called Feed, Feed America. And the problem is that they have standard networks of, you know, large agribusinesses that provide them, you know, surplus produce and those kinds of things. And this is, they're in it now. I've seen several interviews with their CEO. They're in it now, trying to create some new networks so that can get, they need refrigerated trailers, and it's a, it's a fairly big deal. We're interested, we're working with some very local, like Finley Farms, people where we can buy direct from, from the farm. Because these people are hurting too, because their standard distribution network is to less big restaurant, like Jordano's would be big for us here, big restaurant providers, provisioners. And so we're, we're trying to work with some of our local farms. But yeah, I'd be interested in talking more about that, if we can raise, we don't, unfortunately, we have a big trucker, it's not refrigerated. That's an issue.
I also happen to be a family of truckers, and we own thousands of reversion trailers. So we're working closely with farmers to try and do what we can on a personal side to, and we've been struggling to find groups to connect with. So let's talk on that and try and-
What was the rest of your email?
Solvang USA.
Solvang USA? Got it. Thank you. Great. Appreciate it.
So Scott, since you brought yourself into this discussion, how do we help you help us? Because there's different dimensions to this problem. One is getting, sourcing the food that apparently is rotting in the fields or being dumped down drains. I heard similar stories where farmers were basically culling their, their cattle and their hogs because there's no way to get them to market. There's no market demand. It's bizarre. We have people hungry and they can't get meat, or produce, or dairy products. So that's one problem. And the other problem is the logistics of distribution. And I, I would talk to, I guess, a group called the Ranch Church. They did, I, I don't know, that wasn't impromptu, but this, I think this, they want to do this every Thursday.
Every Thursday.
Yeah. So there's another group that we may be able to work with in terms of distributing food. I'd like to see more coordination between the food groups or food banks, whether it's PHP, or Ranch Church, or Bethania Church. I know that they, I'd like to see them work essentially where they're complementary, and not all delivering food, for example, on a Thursday. Maybe it's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, for example. And then we're helping to source that food directly from farmers who have lost their markets, because the restaurants have shut down, hotels have shut down, or maybe there's some other reason. But we would love to work with you, Scott, and, and bring some of that fresh food from the Central Valley area. Let us know what we can do to help you.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a statewide and, you know, it's a bigger issue, and it's an issue for everybody. So there's a group of farmers and trucking company, refrigerated transport companies here in, in the Central Valley that are trying to work together to solve this. So obviously, you know, this region, Solvang and the San Antonio Valley has become near and dear personally. I mean, this is all personal, this has nothing to do with my, you know, and again, I'm speaking purely as an individual right now, not in any capacity, in any official capacity. So Dean, you and I can, can work offline, and I would love to connect you with this group that we're working with here in the Central Valley.
Great. Appreciate it.
Maybe we need to coordinate our efforts with Bilton and some of the other communities too.
Probably the best, probably the best connection that we can make would be through our county food bank that has two warehouses with refrigeration. And they're the ones supporting 50 different emergency food programs right now. So that's probably the best way, as long as, you know, we have, we have a direct supplier ourselves. So I'm happy to work on that.
Okay. With that, I think maybe we'll take a public comment, if there is any, and then take a break. Resume this?
Sure. Yeah. You could, you know, it's a long presentation, you could either address this as a motion now specifically for this item, or you can list, take the whole report after the break.
Oh, okay. Let's just get rid of the people, get the people helping people item taken care of. Sorry. I'm on so many allergy meds right now.
Get you home.
I'm retired, I'm retired, or my people will see me off.
You could convince me of-
I'm a shop. I'm going to show up as one of your gadflies.
All right. So we have this people helping people item here. I think a lot of really good things to, to consider. You know, it's obviously spoilage is going to be an issue with refrigeration and people dumping things. But I think also, as you watch the food chain get disrupted, you know, I'm just of the personal opinion that you're going to start seeing other issues in the, in the food supply chain. And, you know, we probably need to look into, depending on how long this goes on, looking at options for procuring food that is not going to spoil. And having some kind of inventory of it, because you might have to supplement, you know, spoiling food inventories with non-spoiling, in order just to keep people fed at the appropriate levels. But it's just something to think about. Other than that, I, you know, want to thank Dean for his time, and I do want to support this initiative. I, I think we should need to do something to make sure our community is taken care of and fed. Does anyone have anything to talk about regarding this concept of matching funds and, and things like that?
All I'm going to say is, the best thing, best way to get this community fed is to have people to run their businesses. That's just a, that's a side editorial, and it's driving me nuts.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just add that we're working with World Kitchen. I don't know how many of you are familiar with World Kitchen, Chef Andres. But we're also working with them to bring funding to two or three restaurants here locally, so that they can prepare hot lunches or hot dinners every day. So there's a lot of people working on a number of different levels. Just providing a bag of food, even if it's a quality bag of food every single week, doesn't solve the entire problem. So there's, there's a number of assets we're trying to bring in there on the problem. And we do have a local business has volunteered a large cold food storage. We're pretty good at doing sort of just-in-time delivery, get just enough to provide for that day. We're not really storing a lot, but Xenia probably knows, we're remodeling our downstairs at our building in Solvang, so that we'll have coolers and freezers four times what we had before. That'll be done by June 30th.
Well, I do, I realize, I understand where Robert Clark is coming from, getting the businesses up and going. But we also have to realize that that is not happening right now. And we've got another month here, according to, you know, our state mandates.
At least.
And so I feel, I feel that we are obligated to help out our community in a time of need like this, as we did with the small businesses. And this is more on humanitarian survival level. And I would encourage my council members to support financially people helping people and getting food to our residents in this valley. And I also want to thank Scott very much for, for this conversation and opening that up as a possibility of people helping people.
I'm sorry, I know that there are other food bank groups that may need support as well. I think we should be looking, at least reaching out to them and coordinating with them. And there are people who want to donate money to support these, these efforts. So maybe we need to look into providing both of those things.
So I-
People, people, don't you, you do work with the other food sources, you work with the food banks. You get a lot of your stuff from-
And I, I think part of this, and Dean, correct me wrong, but I think what we kind of talked about over the phone, I'm sorry, what? Was, was regard, basically using people helping people as, as one of the, as the nonprofit, you know, fundraiser for funds, but obviously recognizing that there's, there's many different entities involved in the actual, you know, food distribution of things. So you'd be working to help support those with the resources that can be raised. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Your understanding is correct, and we have been working with other organizations. The problem is, none of us so far have any excess food that we could transfer together. You know, we, if we are getting direct deliveries from, from the San Joaquin Valley, that's a different deal where we can organize and coordinate with senior centers and some private, the Church of Bethania, and other private people who are providing meals. So we would be happy to do that.
Perfect. So it's more of a procurement issue and having the funds to procure food to get to our community?
Got a question? I didn't answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. So it's more of a, the issue is more on the food delivery side, is more of a procurement problem, and then of obviously having the funds to, you know, be able to pay for the, for the food?
Exactly. For instance, last week, we spent about $3,000 buying food wholesale through El Rancho Market. We actually have since found another venue through Jordano's, which is just barely more expensive, but they will deliver, because those logistics are a major problem, keeping the food, food fresh. So yeah, we're trying to source a supply. We haven't had enough supply for our regular Thursday food program, and then the two emergency food programs.
Okay.
As yet.
Thank you. And then I do specifically have, there is a caller on the line that, that is public comment and wishes to specifically speak to this people helping people item. So I think it'd be appropriate that we allow them to speak right now and then take a break.
Hi, this is Ellen Holland. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Yes. Oh, awesome. I just wanted to type in on the people helping people and the networking of other entities. I'm not sure if anybody's working with planting a seed at this point out of Wompox. They normally work directly with Holland's, but they do have a program where they glean products from different farms here locally. And that would be an easy thing for us to source food from. Also, in, you know, just south of us, in Ventura County, San Poli area, there are thousands of acres of citrus groves right now with fruit just rotting on the trees. I have clients down there that I was working with, and a lot of it's even organic produce. That if we could get trees together to go down there and harvest, we would have a plethora of food to deliver to people.
I would volunteer for that.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
So we actually, those are great ideas. And we actually do have a local nonprofit, Veggie Rescue, that does green throughout the valley. And that would be the organization. And we actually do get produce from them on a regular basis at People Helping People. They serve a lot of other nonprofits as well. But that would be the organization that I certainly return to if we knew where their product to glean.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just, one question, another public comment? So Dean, it sounds like you're asking for $10,000 in cash, but then you'd also benefit from some sort of cold storage, correct?
Potentially. I mean, if we're going to be receiving regular donations, let's say, from Fresno area, then we might want to have, be able to station a trailer, cold storage trailer someplace, so that we can then distribute to other organizations in the valley. At this point, we don't need it, because we have some cold storage from Buttonwood has volunteered their cold storage.
Do you have, do you have space for the trailer, if, if you needed it?
I'd probably return to the city of Solvang, who has a really large parking lot at the Veterans Memorial Hall, and ask them if we could station that cold storage there.
We, we have a lot of free space, so.
Yeah, but we're hoping we're starting to use it in the fairly near Eastmore Hotel or whatever. But yeah, that parking lot might be late.
Yeah. So we, again, we can talk offline, but, you know, just for the council's purposes, IDK is willing to donate the cold storage trailer. I can have it delivered this week. And then, you know, to make your financial decisions simpler, you can take $5,000 out of what you are paying us in the next fiscal year and apply it to this. I'm fine with making that donation.
Wow.
Are you running for governor, Scott?
I feel, I feel like we are at a live auction right now.
I just, I want to hug the guy.
This is, like I said at the beginning, this is ridiculous, that in 2020, people are going hungry in one of the richest counties in California. It's stupid. So if, and it's happening, and if we can help support Dean and his efforts, and I understand there's a thousand organizations that are all doing the same thing, but, you know, Dean, you're here, so these are the things we can do. So I just confirm that we can get a trailer delivered this week. So I'll get that rolling. If the city's okay with us parking it at, I promise it doesn't say IDK all over it. If we can park it at, that got me in trouble during meal fest. If we can park it in the Veterans Hall, then we'll have that delivered this week. And, you know, just give you the key to the lock and just go from there. We can take all this offline, though. We don't need to discuss it here.
Awesome.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Going to make my request for $15,000 now that you got the extra five.
So what was the initial?
It's, it's $10,000 now, and then $5,000 for the, per quarter for the rest of the year, basically, for-
Or as the crisis continues, not for the end of the year.
So you would be authorized in $30,000.
And Dean, are you sure? I mean, that's, that sounds like-
It's, it's supposed to be reimbursable through FEMA, yes.
Okay, so it's reimbursable. Got it.
I was watching the food line on Thursday, that basically consumed all of the, you know, one side of Solvang's residential streets. I think it brought more cars here than the drone show in, in, what's the question?
Let's just take one at the time, if you can ask.
Sorry, you, you made a great point. And that, actually, she did, with respect to FEMA money. So the whole amount would be reimbursable?
FEMA latest guidelines that came out say that purchase and distribution of food is reimbursable.
So if we put in $50,000, we'd get $50,000 reimbursed?
That's-
Just to clarify.
Based on the guidelines, yes.
That's a good number.
I love your enthusiasm, Dean.
Somebody mute him.
Seriously, I think we need to start thinking bigger, unfortunately.
No, I think we need to think a little bigger here.
But, and step by step, though. Step by step.
Well, I want them to start thinking about scaling up. Because if, if I'm right, and I hope I'm not, this problem's going to get worse in the near term.
Well, I mean, you just, you just watch every, every week that goes by, the, the volume is just, it's increasing pretty, it's scary.
Well, to Robert's point, the longer these businesses stay closed, the longer the economy stays closed. Well, to, to Robert's point, the longer these businesses stay closed, the longer the economy stays closed, the worse it is for these poor unemployed families. And, and this doesn't go away overnight. It could be a three-month process before they get back to work.
Oh, and there's still the recovery. There's still, I mean, these things, this is gonna.
Let's vote on this.
Yeah. So Chris, do you have a motion?
I move that we go ahead and provide, uh, the minimum of $10,000 that we used.
It's $10,000 now. The way the request is from People Helping People is $10,000 now and then $5,000 payments for four quarters. So it totals $30,000, but it's over a long period of time, obviously.
Well, I move that we go ahead and, and do as you suggest here and.
We could, we can always reevaluate this in a month.
Absolutely. I have no problem with this.
Let's just go with it. Yep.
Maybe we need to talk to Scott.
Yeah. Well, I think we can, we'll, we'll work on this and then, um, prepare another update at the next, uh, meeting in two weeks.
So did you just make a motion?
Yes, he did.
Okay. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mayor Perterm Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Dejornius?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Tson?
Yes.
Plus is 5-0. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Scott.
So with that, we, we took public comment on the one that was interested in speaking specifically to People Helping People. I'm not sure if there'll be, are there any other public comments on the line right now? Well, they're welcome to call back in after the, the restaurant break. That's all I was gonna say. I'll take public comment again, um, after that. So otherwise, we'll resume in about five minutes.
Scott, I'll talk to you tomorrow. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll resume the meeting after break. We're still on item number five, COVID-19 update and policy direction. We dealt with people helping peoples request separately and took public comment on that item. Are there any callers by chance on the phone? Maybe just listening. So let's see, so we took care of the people helping people item. Finished taking the rest of the staff report, is that where we're at?
Yes. So item number five, COVID-19 update and policy direction. There is a number of different sub reports almost or sub issues in this report. The first one is the latest clarification to the county of, from the county of Santa Barbara on the health order. As I mentioned during the city manager report, there was a new order issued effective April 24, extending the order through May 31st. It maintains all restrictions in place, same as we have been operating since the original health order went into place. It clarifies essential, non-essential businesses. The county is kicking off a process tomorrow following San Luis Obispo type of strategy that is supposed to help form a group of leadership for Santa Barbara County to figure out a way to comply with California governors' six indicators for reopening. And those six indicators are the ability to monitor and protect our communities through testing, contact tracing, isolating, and supporting those who are positive or exposed. Number two, the ability to prevent infection in people who are at risk for more severe COVID-19. The ability of the hospital and health systems to handle surges, the ability to develop therapeutics to meet the demand, the ability for businesses, schools, and childcare facilities to support physical distancing, and the ability to determine when to reinstitute certain measures such as the stay-at-home orders if necessary. And so the county of Santa Barbara has not had discussions with our jurisdiction or with other cities. As far as I know to date, they have prepared, and I believe sent a report to, or a letter to Governor Newsom last week that's attached to your report. And that report basically just states that county of Santa Barbara did not qualify for the CARES Act because the whole county is less than the 500,000 in population. So CARES Act would have given the county direct funding from federal funds specifically for the disaster COVID-19 expenditures. We did not qualify for that, so the only way we would receive any money through the county that way would be going through the state. And so they're writing a letter to the state stating that the county of Santa Barbara has fairly significant numbers of poverty levels. It has a significant number of cases and we didn't receive those funds. And they're asking for additional funding basically from the governor to be able to address his six indicators. Now, in your report, there is also a similar letter that was put together, and it's actually from Jordan Cunningham and signed by all of the board of supervisors from San Luis Obispo County and by each of the mayors in San Luis Obispo County that actually is a lot more actionable in its terms, basically stating the ground as to why San Luis Obispo County is ready for reopening. So Santa Barbara County is openly saying that they will be kicking off a process to follow county of San Luis Obispo. We are here now at the end of April and the order is extended through the end of May. As I mentioned before, the clarifying order that came out on last Friday, those clarifications have been in the works for a while and finally came out in terms of making it very clear which businesses are essential and non-essential and what's required. So the question is how long will it take now for us to work with the county in this leadership group to actually come up with recommendations to where the county itself could reopen? So one of the recommendations here in the report is whether or not the council wants to have any kind of communication to the county or other elected officials in terms of stating its position on reopening and developing this strategy. So that's kind of number one, and I can either keep on going with the entire report or on this one, it might be actually more useful to just discuss topic by topic because they're so distinct.
Unfortunately, I agree with that comment. I mean, I have problems with this six step or phased reopening. Are we supposed to somehow be in, create systems for testing and tracing and tracking? Is that what we do now?
That is essentially what the county is tasked with, yes. So that's what they're going to be developing.
What if they don't come to our city? Let's say they go to Bilton and do theirs first, so we can't reopen because we don't have those systems in place?
Well, their job is to do it for the entire county. We'll find out, as I mentioned, tomorrow is a kickoff where the mayor and myself have it on our calendar to join their call and find out more about, you know, who exactly is going to be doing what in that leadership group determining the strategy for reopening.
So this is basically a wish list, because there's no way they can actually do this. They, I mean, there's no real actionable steps for these goals. I mean, for example...
Is that a question?
I'm trying, well, the question is how are we supposed to tell our businesses to redraw their floor plans so they can, you know, create the social distancing, this wonderful wish list?
Well, it's a step in the right direction. It's better with, better than what they have now.
But who's going to do that and how are they going to enforce that? Is the city going to run around telling you, oh, you need to redesign your restaurant?
No, you put out your separation guidelines and let them run with that, excuse me.
I guess what I'd like, okay, here's my comment to you guys. Let's use the Swedish model. It works. It's working just fine in Sweden.
Well, I mean, unfortunately, we live in, well, unfortunately, I shouldn't say that. Fortunately, we live in Solvang, we're very fortunate to be here. But I must say that we as a city fall within the jurisdiction of Santa Barbara County and the state and obviously the federal government. And so in this report, you have, I even actually put some of the information from the White House webpage, which is a three-phased approach, phase one, phase two, phase three. It kind of summarizes phase one here in terms of what the president's reopening plan looks like. Then obviously, the governors are issuing their own. These are the six indicators that the county of Santa Barbara is working with. If you read through the letter of San Luis Obispo County, you can see that whether, you know, you agree or disagree with their plan, but there's definitely a lot more in that letter that speaks to specific steps that point to how and why the county is actually in compliance and ready for reopening with these six indicators from the state.
So you're saying that Santa Barbara would fall under a similar profile, that we are ready to open just like SLO is?
No. Per the letter, Santa Barbara County is not going to do anything. They are going to fall in line with the state and that is direct, and all they're asking for is money. That's what their letter is stipulating. They just want money.
Why can't we follow the SLO model?
That's what we're discussing right now.
Is that the... I'm wondering, is that in the form of a motion that you would contact the county and urge that they follow, they follow something more like the San Luis Obispo model?
I think that's a great idea.
But they also include the cities more proactively as San Luis Obispo County did?
Indeed, I think that's a great motion and I would like to move that.
And is that in the form of a letter or in a verbal form or are we going to the board of supervisors?
I think all of the above and do it very tersely. I think if there's no more questions, we can discuss a little bit more and then decide what we want to do. Does anyone have any more questions?
I have no more questions, I have some statements.
Is any public comment, I guess?
No public comment?
Well, oh, no, sorry, not public.
You are public.
I'm wondering if there was a second to Chris's motion.
I'd like to discuss a little bit more.
Council discussion?
I have, I have one question, if I may. Okay, and a lot of this is coming from residents that I've spoken to, and I would say it's about nine to one open versus keep it where it's going. We had tourists here until the second week of March. We had lots and lots of tourists until the second week of March. We have five cases, five cases of COVID in the valley and holding for now.
No, no, we have no more cases in the valley at all.
We had, according to the county, we had five cases. We've had no new cases in over three weeks. We've had...
We had three new cases over this weekend in Santa Barbara County.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the San Inez Valley, the valley of twenty thousand, a valley of 20,000 people. And it's been posted in the Santa Barbara newspapers that we've had, we had five cases. We've had no new cases in almost three weeks. And people are asking why, for example, the Copenhagen House was busy until the 13th of March with tourists coming every single day. The hotels were busy. Eight hundred people go into Valley Fresh every day. There's people out and about. It's very arbitrary as far as what's closed and not. Why do we have no new cases? My biggest concern is to do any leniency is does Cottage have what capacity? If we were to start slowly opening up this city, what capacity does Cottage have to accept new cases? Because that's part of this, but part of the governor's whole deal was we need to slow this down to alleviate the burden on the healthcare facilities and the hospitals.
Correct.
Well, I don't think we have anybody in a hospital in the valley that has COVID-19. I don't know that.
We only have 39 people with the disease in the hospitals right now.
In the whole county.
In the whole county.
Correct.
And only 11 of them are in ICU, so this is really not a problem.
In the valley. But if, like, for example, the LA Times gentleman came up here and said, well, of course not, because the reason you have no new cases is because you've cut off tourism. Yes, we did that on March 19th. The virus has been around since January or who knows how much earlier, because how can you trust where it came from and what data you're getting from where it came from? I'm just playing, I'm not playing the devil's advocate because I really want...
You're making a very good point. As far, the whole goal was to flatten the curve so that we didn't overwhelm the hospitals.
Exactly, and we have done that with, as we get an A plus in that or not we.
And now the hospitals have the equipment that they need to deal with any new surge if there happens to be a new surge.
And yet every business is still closed.
And yet we're still closed. Except for essential services like convenience stores and community gardens.
And beef jerky.
Yeah, and beef jerky, I mean, come on.
Haven't figured that one out.
Golf courses.
Yeah. Why are golf courses, never mind, let me start it. But I would love to read Andy Caldwell's letter.
I think you should enter that into the system.
Into the record, if I may. May I read this? This is from Andy Caldwell, it's from last week. Please take the time to witness two completely diverging approaches by local leaders to the virus and the shutdown. The link below provides a copy of the letter signed by leaders in SLO, including Assemblyman Jordan Cunningham, county supervisors, and local mayors. The attachment is in response by, is the response by Santa Barbara County supervisors on that agenda last week. SLO is asking Newsom to return local control because they've taken extraordinary measures to meet the guidelines to reopen by way of Newsom's directives. These extraordinary measures include the success of flattening the curve and creating an inordinately large surge capacity on the Cal Poly campus. Compare and contrast this to the Santa Barbara County response, which can be boiled down to two aspects. We will passively follow the lead of the governor, but we need more money. Money to implement his plan and money to make us whole as a result of the expenses and losses associated with the pandemic and the panic. Santa Barbara County thus has no plan or emphasis to reopen our economy. SLO and other leading counties who will attempt to reassert local control will surely get rebuffed by the governor. That is because Governor Newsom is in no hurry whatsoever to reopen our economy, to wit his 80-person committee that is filled with political hacks, in his words, who are going to try and use this crisis to reshape the economy and society. The co-chair of this is Tom Steyer. So what's the next step for SLO leaders? They should go forward with their plan post haste and ask for forgiveness later since they have been denied permission from the start. Or they can go on the record by asking their county council to send a letter signed by all the same cities indicating the following. Whereas we respect the fact the governor and other elected leaders needed to buy time for our hospitals and care providers to gear up and prepare for a surge, in fact, that time is over. Specifically, the Constitution of the United States only grants police powers in emergency events that create a compelling need to usurp the freedom of the American people. Furthermore, any such police powers must be narrowly construed and applied as is necessary to, so as not to infringe on the rights of the people. In light of the fact that the compelling need was to flatten the curve, well, that's been accomplished. The fact that the governor is not restoring control back to local authorities and the people coupled with the fact that there is no end date to a shutdown edict and no narrow construction to the same means he has exceeded his constitutional authority. What all this means is that we ask for permission to be in the view of the above facts because the state has no constitutional authority to have denied us we are moving forward to reopening our society and economy based on our own authority and responsibility to do store, to do so, meaning that we take the heat for it as well. Let the state try to stop us or sue us if the government is so inclined. We are abiding by the Constitution which recognizes our citizens as the sovereigns. Andy Caldwell. I think it's pretty succinct and I would like to hitch our wagon to SLO and do what they're doing.
Next. Did my motion capture all of that? Karen, did you have some comments, Karen?
Do I have a comment? Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I, I think first and foremost, we're obligated to abide by the law, which I am doing right now by being remote. And I am more than six feet away from somebody. Whether or not we, our views on this, whatever they are, the state mandate, county health, states, we need to be six feet away and is actually supporting doing things remotely. I know this could get very, very political, but believe me, I would love to have businesses in Solvang open up. I would love that. But if we follow the law, we simply cannot do that right now.
So Karen, which law is that again?
We're talking about the rules and regs from our governor at this point, when they're deciding what are essential businesses and who to, when to open and who can open. We're still going through that process based upon cases, increased number of cases, decreased number of cases, hospitalizations, positive testing.
Yeah, but that's a specious argument from the standpoint that he has violated the Constitution. He's used... Clear, clearly, I should say, and I defer to the city attorney to explain this, but maybe you can highlight or explain to us why we are within our authority to go ahead and ignore this order.
It would be on the spot.
Mr. Mayor, I would just note there is a judge...
Can we just let Karen finish her comments before? Yeah, so Karen, please proceed.
Well, I mean, it was an interesting, interesting commentary there, but I happen to have a cousin who was ER doctor in Queens Hospital in Brooklyn, and he watched close to 800 people die in one day, all right? And this is a very real thing. It is affecting everyone and it does not discriminate. We are lucky, we are actually lucky that this is a tourist town so that we are not at this point time having tourists come in here. And most of us in this town are very healthy. Now, I don't know if you all do know, but there was a case up at Attarag and where my mother is. And it was not from a local resident, it was from somebody who worked at Attarag, but they came from another area. So I really strongly feel that although I love this town to open up, tourist population is very difficult to manage with people coming in. We don't know where people are coming from. I would just, I don't know how we can regulate that at this point. So I always err on the side of caution and I would just follow the law. That's what I have to say on that.
Which law?
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Can we address that law?
So Chip, if you'd like to answer Chris's questions now.
I'm just going to answer with the fact that there is a judge in Illinois who today issued an order determining that the Illinois state governor's closure order is in violation of the Constitution. And so that I'm sure will be being taken up by an appellate court and will have, will have some rulings in the relatively near future.
You know, that's actually fascinating in Illinois because Governor Whitmer in Michigan is, is her, if you want to call it draconian, her measures are, you can't even mow your lawn in Michigan right now. And I'm surprised that a court hasn't touched that one yet.
Daniel?
As far as this year's letter, I just, as I look through the agenda and I look to these two letters, there was a glaring blankness at the end of the Santa Barbara County letter that did not include any of its city mayors or any of its, really didn't ask for the constituents' opinion. And I feel like the Santa Barbara County has let down its cities and, you know, all the locals as far as not getting their input, whereas SLO actually has everyone's signature on the bottom supporting their measure. And I'm not saying everyone would support what SLO is doing or what Santa Barbara County is doing, but at least they were reached out to and included in this letter to the governor. I wholeheartedly support what SLO is trying to do, and they're trying to, I think, save more lives in what they're doing than what Santa Barbara County is doing. And I'm just disappointed in Santa Barbara County's lack of foresight to actually have this plan already in place. Their idea, as you read the paper, is just to form more committees and discuss this as our city manager has talked about, which is just going to push it back longer and longer and longer. So I am all for having our own letter, issuing our own letter, sending it to the governor of Santa Barbara County, getting other cities involved as SLO did so that they can be represented as well. That's my opinion.
Okay. So you want to issue a letter to the county urging that they get more involved?
I frankly don't care about the county. I'd send it straight up to the state and tell them that we agree with SLO and that you should turn it over to local authorities to decide on their own economy. And that's not saying everyone has to come out and open their business or go out and be in the community. You can decide what you want to do. It's the freedom of choice. And I feel like at this point, we've done everything they've asked and it's time to give that authority back over to the local representatives and have them decide.
Karen?
Yeah, I think it sends a very strong message up the chain saying you don't get to be an authoritarian government. There's something called the Constitution that still applies. And as far as the law that Karen was referring to, there is no law. Those were executive orders that have yet to be challenged in court, and I believe that if they were, they would not stand up in court. Now, I'm not saying that we rush out and return to normal without, you know, in a careless fashion. I think that there are definitely strategies and ways where we can reopen the economy in phased approach, just like Donald Trump had, President Trump had suggested. But the idea that we have to stay closed until further notice and we're going to just follow blindly until somebody says it's okay, that just doesn't work for me.
And it's so arbitrary too, because a paddleboarder gets arrested in Malibu for not getting out of the water, and Henry's Beach in Santa Barbara was like the Fourth of July this weekend.
Well, it goes back to the local leadership. For example, Gil Garcetti, the mayor there, actually went so far as to say he would hunt people down and make sure they stayed inside.
Gil Garcetti was his dad.
I'm sorry.
Eric Garcetti.
Eric Garcetti. The point is, this haphazard, almost hypocritical approach to reopening doesn't make sense to me. And I think we need to take the lead and do what's best for us. Here's another example, I think we talked about, I don't know if I talked about it with you guys. We are more of an agrarian city and environment, and the likelihood that we're going to have problems with high-density interaction and traffic as they do in places like New York or San Francisco, it's just highly unlikely. So that explains why we've had such a low incidence of the disease here in the valley, even though we've had thousands of people coming through as tourists. So my feeling is they can't use a one-size-fits-all approach to every county, let alone every city.
And the governors around the country are taking that, their own initiative to do what's best for their states. And we just happen to live in California where Governor Newsom is doing what he thinks.
Well, even Governor Newsom made the mistake of admitting that he's using this situation to promote a progressive agenda. He did that on TV.
No catastrophe or no disaster is, you shouldn't waste a disaster.
Well, that's a Democrat strategy. So what kind of legal options do we have? As far as, I get that we can draft a letter. Is there anything more that possibly we could do as far as, you know, for example, the parks are closed, Hans Christian Hansen is closed. Is there anything that we could possibly do to open those up as a local city instead of just sitting back and not doing anything? What's the legal liability? Is that what you're asking?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that that is the question. Of course, doing anything different than what everyone else is doing raises the possibility that somebody is going to sue for you having done something different than everyone else is. And then it becomes, for certain things, it's certainly just a matter of, you know, are you willing to take that probably, you know, that risk? There are other things where the order is, the orderers are clearer. I mean, I think you could, for example, there is no prohibition, as far as I know, saying you must have the parks closed.
Correct.
So you could open the parks.
Right.
There are steps you could start taking that are not as restrictive as you have been. And then there are, I mean, additional things. For example, there, as I understand, there is going to be a group here in Solvang this Friday who is going to be out, I think, at Solvang Park. You know, you could, you can go join that. You can take actions to perhaps put out picnic tables and make it easier for people to be able to meet the limits that have been put on them. You can start being ready, again, for social distancing. You've already given direction to your city manager that she can waive any requirements that are necessary in order to allow social distancing, for example, for restaurants. I've heard that there's a restaurant here in town that may want to essentially... I've heard that there's a restaurant here in town that may want to essentially operate like a car hop and use the city street there. That's something you could easily allow. I think I would have to do a little more research and think about it before I can answer your question about, should you just openly declare the city is open?
No, I wouldn't agree with that.
So again, like I said, I would need to do a little more work, and you would need to direct me to do that.
So then staff could work on a phased approach.
Like, why is Zaca Golf Course in Bulton open but Solvang, the Alisal's closed?
It's totally arbitrary, that's the point.
Well, the latest order that came out on Friday has actually clarified it.
What I'm suggesting is, can you start thinking about a phased approach to reopen based on legal liability? For example, are we going to get sued because people are walking in the park? Probably not. But are we going to get sued because people are eating in a restaurant? I don't know. That's a different kind of liability, right?
Well, how about us getting sued because we opened everything up and we accidentally killed people? How about that one?
Yep, that's not, Karen, that is not what we are talking about. That's the whole concept of a phased approach. Look at those businesses that have wide-open spaces, like a golf course, or a car wash, apparently, or storage facilities. There's no reason why these things can't be open.
Right. I agree.
You got any comments, Ryan?
I'm so zoned out on allergy medications that just trying to follow this, you know?
I mean, here's a liquor store.
I'm actually kind of scared to say things right now because of how it might.
You can buy liquor and lottery tickets, but you can't go to church.
I think the notable, the notable things in my half-sleep stage here is, you know, just as you're wishing that the county would have involved the cities more in its processes, you know, I think if we're going to send a letter off asking for that, then we should probably do, you know, show that we can exercise the same in our own backyard. I know we have, I think Scott with IDK is on the phone here. We do have, we should probably at least discuss this lightly on this topic here. We do have a committee that's been formed and largely of people, you know, business owners in the Solvang community here that are going to be tasked with some of the ideas around reopening, you know, practice, what is it going to take when we can actually start moving things forward? And what is the business community going to need from the city in order to enable those things as we progress? I hope I'm making some sense. But, you know, they're going to be meeting, I believe, this Wednesday or Thursday. To me, it would seem logical that they review some of these things that, you know, are all fumbling through our heads right now. And, you know, if it's desirable to send a letter at that point or something, you know, maybe have them start drafting a letter that, you know, the council could consider sending or authorize somebody that could send on the council's behalf, you know? Those are methods that could be used that's involving, you know, the people in our own community to push things forward and gets that community.
Why not have two letters?
Buy-in while, well, maybe, yeah, it could be two members, whatever, you know, while also reducing, you know, demand on our staff to now be writing letters and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think then we could possibly have a separate meeting to discuss what they have decided or what their recommendations are, what they think, and then we can revisit a lot of these issues.
Do you want to have a separate or special meeting on reopening protocols?
Well, I think at some point, you're probably going to end up with some form of a workshop on these kinds of things. I don't know if you're going to necessarily find it in an agenda item at a normal meeting.
No, I just think it's a good idea to have, I think that steering committee is made up of enough people that it could be a larger demographic of city representatives to give us some input on their thoughts on reopening.
You know what? People are going belly up now.
Right.
This is not committees and meetings. People are not dying. People are going broke. They're losing their homes, they're not homes, they're losing business, they're losing money, they're having a hard time. That's why we're talking about people helping people, because people can't go to work. And we want to have meetings? You know, it's just crazy.
That's why I wanted a more simplistic approach. If we're going to get sued, then we need to think twice about that particular business. If we're not going to get sued, then just open it up. And here's the reality, have you noticed the streets of Solvang? People aren't paying attention to the governor's orders anymore. They're going out. They're done. So either we lead or we follow, like Santa Barbara County.
If I may, may I just make a comment?
Yes.
Approach to?
Yeah, so the only thing I'd like to just clarify is that the goal of this group that we put together, you know, obviously, it was originally designed to kind of help with even permitting in tourism and kind of provide a more holistic view on the community's needs around tourism. And we've now shifted a little bit to more economic recovery, and then over the long term, we'll hopefully get back to a point where we can focus on how we can sustain tourism. But what I want to make pretty clear, and obviously, this group has not yet met, so I can't speak for everyone yet, but it is my opinion that the delineation is that we're working, the steering committee is working to identify ways that we can drive, safely drive business to when it's appropriate to open, and ways that we can safely provide, you know, tourism activity when it's safe to do so. So it's not my intent or opinion that this group would necessarily try and define what that safe to do would be. I think that that's ultimately a city, county, or a state job, regardless of where you fall in that, as opposed to the staff sort of steering committee. So I just want to make sure that we remain clear that, you know, I don't believe that this committee will come together with recommendations on how to safely reopen Solvang, because that's outside of the expertise of the group.
It's not, yeah. It's not their job.
I would just say that I agree with what the council's saying. I understand the frustration. I agree with the county to an extent. I think everybody's looking at legal liability and obviously trying to not kill people. But I want to make sure that it's clear, you know, to the public, that I see our responsibilities as operating within whatever framework, the city, the county, or the state, regardless of which, depending on which avenue you guys as a body take, will work within that framework that you guys approve, rather than being the ones that direct that framework to you guys, if that makes sense, from the outside. Everything else, we're happy to deal with.
And obviously, the lowest level of a health organization is at the county level. The city is, it's not part of the city's responsibilities, so. But one of the things, Scott, that we'll be talking about later with you is just some of the ideas of, you know, putting out tables on Copenhagen, closing streets. So we could take a more proactive kind of stance in developing those strategies and then proposing those to the county and saying, you know, we, this is why we believe this is actually within your guidelines and safe, and this is what we would like to do.
Correct. I mean, that's one of the things we were planning on talking about later is, you know, looking at their guidelines and what can we do within their guidelines. And I understand the council's discussion around whether or not those guidelines are, you know, appropriate or not, and that's sort of above, not sort of, it's way above my pay grade. But what we are looking at with the committee is how we can interpret those to best support the city's needs. And one of the things that we propose is something that a lot of Bay Area cities are doing. They're calling it slow streets, where they're closing some streets of vehicle traffic to allow greater social distancing on the street. So as the sun comes out, it's unvariable that, you know, those of us who've been cooped up in our houses for 40, 50 days are going to want to start going out and being in the warmer weather. And, you know, doing that on sidewalks or doing it in our existing city parks, you know, while maintaining the requirements from the county gets a little tough, and that creates some issues for the city. So one of the recommendations we have is the slow streets program, which the Bay Area cities have kind of spearheaded, where we close certain streets. In Solvang, I think the street that makes the most sense is Copenhagen, and allow people to kind of walk those streets and social distance within a larger area. You know, the car hop idea, I think, is great, too. And, you know, when it's appropriate, and if the county agrees, you know, again, within the existing framework, subject to the city, you know, trying to mandate that change, within the existing framework, we would obviously recommend, you know, one of the recommendations that's come out in phase two or three, I believe, was that the restaurants would have to reduce their capacity. So if we close Copenhagen, for example, you know, the restaurants along Copenhagen could increase their capacity by allowing seated, outdoor dining, or parlets, I guess they're called, in other parts of the state. Currently, that's not allowed in the guidelines. I think right now, even outdoor dining has to be closed. So these are the types of things that we can ask the county, you know, if it's appropriate within the current guidelines, and see if we can make changes, phase changes in that way. Not necessarily, our group wouldn't necessarily come and say, you know, we believe that everything should be open, and we should buy all the tour buses back and reopen Solvang today. That's sort of above this group's pay grade. But once that decision is made, we'll come up with some plans on how we can implement those. And that's one of the current suggestions.
Well, I think one of the important things that group two is to just run through all the different scenarios of how this thing can be played out so that the business community can best respond to it, because we just don't know how, you know? You could open up all of Solvang today, but if LA is totally shut, and that's 90% of our market, then what are we doing anyway? You know? So there's, I mean, obviously, there's going to be those that are going to, you know, still come up from LA, and, you know, just like the beaches fill up, and, you know, but it's not going to be significant, and it's not going to be what it is. And we don't know how long any of these things are, or how they're going to roll it out, or what restrictions, when they do allow restaurants to start reopening, you know, is it going to be, you can have a table every 12 feet? Is it going to be, you know? What does that look like? Do we then utilize Copenhagen to create, you know, that, for example? I'm just throwing ideas out there, but those are all things that the, that committee could talk about there, so that we are ready to activate when we can activate.
Great. Can we go back to the letter? Are we going to write this letter?
Yes.
Still a motion?
Well, is there anything we could do right now? Is there something we can do legally right now to send a message that this is the, we're not just writing a letter? Because if there's something we can do right now as a city, like, for example, if the parks, if we can say, hey, we're opening the parks and we're writing a letter, that sends a bigger message to the county and to the state and to surrounding communities.
Certainly, that could be included in the letter.
Than just, what I'm saying is, I don't think we need a letter to open those. It's not on the mandate, so we could say, we're opening them.
I'm just saying, let them know we're doing it.
We can definitely open the parks. The parks are not specifically to be closed. The only requirements that there were is, you know, special clean of the equipment. But we can definitely, you know, lift the gates up and let people move much more freely.
Where's the sheriff's sign board right now?
The sheriff's?
It shows that, like Bike Race Saturday, as you're coming into town, where's that apparatus right now?
I do not know.
I don't know why we can't put that at the bottom of the hills, people coming into town saying, please keep your distance, et cetera, just everything we can do to...
If people don't know that by now, they're living in a box, man. I mean, everyone knows this, we don't need a sign.
Every resource we have.
And no one's forcing anyone to go out. We're just saying, we're moving in this direction. And by opening the parks, that's a definite signal that that's the direction we're moving. We're writing a letter. We're trying what we can do as a city to bring this economy back for the future, for our kids, for everyone, to avoid this huge depression that we're digging ourselves into.
Is it better to ask for permission than for, or forgiveness than permission?
We don't, we don't need permission for this. That's what I'm trying to say.
You don't need permission for the parks.
I'm saying other things.
And I'd like to see the council take the lead in breaking the psychology of fear that's literally destroying us.
I'm on board with that.
I mean, this disease is manageable. In fact, in terms of the number of deaths, it's no different than the flu. In fact, last year's flu season, the one before, 2017, 18, were worse than this one in terms of hospitalizations and in terms of deaths. So the idea that we can't manage our way through this, that's bogus. I think we need to take the initiative and take...
I'll make a motion.
I think Chip had a comment.
I was just going to note for you that you're on the consent agenda earlier this evening. Your item number G was accepting the notice of completion of rebuilding the playground at Sunny Fields Park. So this might be, I mean, it's probably really nice and clean right now. This might be a good time to send that message.
Right. I mean, I think we should probably look into whether, I think playgrounds, specific equipment was named somewhere as particularly closed. So...
Because all the hard work came from Wuhan.
If we could agree that we lift the gates on Hans Christian's Park.
From what I've seen, that is, you know, still accessible, the playground equipment then has caution tape all over, like shared-type things is, you know, or picnic tables are turned upside down kind of thing. So people can do their thing, what they want in public.
Has there been any science at all that proves that this virus lasts any more than a few minutes in the air, in the sunlight? They said that UV kills it on contact.
I've been using a blow dryer up my nose for the last three weeks, and I'm healthy.
I will not claim to be a doctor.
The point is, I mean, even the CDC and the FDA, they are saying that UV kills the virus. So the idea that we have to...
Is there any more discussion? I would make a motion.
Yeah, unless, does Karen have any?
Karen, any more comments? Is she on mute?
Yeah, 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 okay. No, no, you know, I have no more comments, you know? I'm not a doctor, I'm not a professional. I'm simply taking advice of, you know, legislature, governor, county supervisors. So I'll continue to abide by those mandates, I won't say law, but I'll say by those mandates that they put forward, trying to keep us all healthy. So that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we write a letter similar to Slow's letter, advocating the, turning over the opening of the economy to the local jurisdictions, and also that we open the parks in the city of Solvang.
I'll second that.
Okay. I think the only thing to add to that is just the part about...
Yeah, please check on the...
Checking on the actual playground equipment. I think, I believe that needs to remain closed.
That makes sense.
Okay. And this would be a letter from the mayor, from the council?
We can work on drafting a letter.
Yep.
Okay, so it's been...
Who do you want authorized to send the letter? Because technically, if it's not a letter that's been written and then approved from the council at the actual meeting, then you need to approve somebody to send on behalf of the council.
Right. Would that be?
I would authorize Ryan to send that letter.
Okay.
Send that.
Okay.
I recognize the official writer for the...
And do we have a second accepting that amendment?
It's been moved and seconded.
No.
Well, actually, if you just accept what I...
Accept the amendment, fine.
Okay. So Mayor Perterm Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Dejornius?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
No explanation point.
Mayor Chisant?
Yes.
Passes four.
We have to make a motion as well. It's past 9:30.
Well, we're still on the COVID-19 update, so as long as we're on that item.
Okay, got it.
But once we finish that item, we'll need to take one before going on to item number six.
I've got a quick question, and maybe it's already been answered. At what point are we going to discuss, as a council, the protocols to reopen the city? Or are we just leaving that to you to tell us?
I think we are working with the county, I mean, we'll have continued updates on COVID-19. Tomorrow, there will be this kickoff with the county, now there's this letter being drafted. IDK is working with the Committee of Representatives from Solvang City, determining, you know, recommendations from the community in terms of reopening strategy. So I think those three things are working towards coming together and having a reopening strategy, and we'll come back with a next update.
And Chip, can you bring back some kind of an opinion related to the legal liability of opening? For example, I assume that we can open certain things up in phases, and you might be able to differentiate that for the council, be able to say, yeah, these things, there's probably almost no legal liability, so go ahead and open the parks, like we've been discussing. Whereas maybe there are some types of businesses that would pose a different kind of threat to the city.
Like the beach pyramid builders.
If that's a direction from the council, then I can do that.
I would like to use that as a...
I just want to caution, since this item was earlier, we're trying to control the cost.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to do this quite yet.
And I love how this council always wants to say, I want to control the cost of the city attorney, but then let's throw all this stuff on the city attorney.
At this point, I think his fees are cheaper than keeping the city closed. So the sooner we get at that answer and start reopening the city, the smarter we're going to look.
In fact, we can base everything... In fact, we, we can base everything on TOT units. He makes 13 TOT units per hour.
There you go. But I still think that we need to cut, we need to get, and it's unique to our city because we are tourist dependent. So we need to know, what's the legal liability? What are the red lines that we have to avoid?
Well, I think some of the concerns, you know, just to be aware of, you know, is, is a lot of the things that we have as a city are still contracted out with the county. So an example would be a restaurant that decides that they want to open up tomorrow and, you know, do whatever. Although solving might not have the capacity to do any enforcement or even the desire to do any enforcement, the county would then be here or could be here the next, the next day.
The county has actually made it a misdemeanor. I mean, they're not actively enforcing it, but it is a misdemeanor. So even if we had our own police force, although those police officers would have the police powers to enforce that misdemeanor.
They are enforcing it, actually. They're actually threatening restaurants. I've actually seen.
The county health, they've already made.
A law, if they're enforcing and charging people with misdemeanors, it must be a law.
So my question is, is there any way that the city of solving can basically disagree with these arbitrary tickets and, and what the, so that is a question. I would love to know what legal standing we have, because I'd like to ban any sort of ticketing or fining of our businesses that are in the city. Because I think it's absolutely unconstitutional.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, I'm, I'm going to take direction from the council if you would like me to go and do some research and send you an opinion on that.
Yeah, I'm giving him direction. I hope you guys agree, and we'll give it to him as well. I think we need to know this so that we can open up the city as soon as possible.
I think specifically, we got to know what, what we can do as a city under the, you know, because we're obviously under the county and under the state. I'm not sure that there's a lot we can do, but if there is, that would be fantastic. I'd love to know that, what our power is.
Is that part of the current motion?
Well, so I, I would just like to ask what, you know, your gut instinct on that.
Yeah.
I mean, do we really need to go into, I mean, it, it, asking for a bunch of, you know, time spent of you to go search some kind of, you know, crazy thing that's, you know, going to cost us a bunch of money now and, what's your gut instinct on that? To me, it just seems.
I want to hold him off from doing it, spending any money to do any surveys on this just yet.
That's, I, I get it. But what is your gut instinct?
There's nothing the city can do.
To me, it seems like we're in the county. The county's going to come here, they're going to do the thing, you know?
Jason?
My gut instinct is that restaurants are all regulated by the county health department. And that's what you're looking at mainly is the question, can restaurants open or not? And I don't think that any restaurant's going to, to open even if the city, even if I come up with the determination that the city can issue a proclamation that the county shouldn't come to solving. I don't think that any, any restaurant's going to take that chance.
And when the county chases after one of the businesses, because, you know, and then it says solve, and it's just, the whole thing turns into a total.
So let's just stick with the original, drafting a letter, opening the parks, and then we can discuss it.
But before, what about hotels? When do they get to open?
Well, they are essential. The problem is that there's no demand.
They're essential, but restaurants aren't. And yet, we'll be discussing something in a few minutes related to using restaurants to feed the, the poor and the seniors in our community.
Actually, I should note that staying at hotels is okay as long as you're not doing it for enjoyment purposes. It must be for an essential, you must be an essential business traveler.
Oh, okay. But don't enjoy yourself.
Yeah. Because technically, you still would be, need to be an essential to, you know, technically, under the, under the mandates, travel to the hotel.
So.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We had a motion specifically to, and it passed four to one, to send a letter and to open up parks and then look into the playground issue.
Okay. Send a letter to the state regarding our position and, as well as the county? Or, I'm just trying to understand this.
Sure. Same letter.
Maybe all the restaurant owners can send letters to Joan Hartman.
Okay. I can always do that.
Okay, so we have a few more items on this COVID-19 update. Just going back for a second to the resident support and collaboration with nonprofits. We talked about partnership with People Helping People. We'll continue to work with them. You authorized $30,000 to be given to this nonprofit for food purchase. And we also have volunteer program for dog food distribution at the visitor center that we will be posting more information on. But we'll be basically repurposing the visitor center for a while. That's completely zero cost to the city program, fully run by a volunteer. And then we have an upcoming state program that's not.
And I, I'm sorry, did you move on to, my tracking's so bad. Are we moving on to item number six now?
No, we are still on COVID-19, item number five. There's quite a bit more to go on this.
Okay.
So Governor Newsom has announced on Friday of last week, April 24th, that he is looking at a state program that would be 75% funded by FEMA dollars and 25% funded by the state to provide meals to seniors. So this could be a valuable program which would help seniors stay at home at the same time as having their meals being provided to them and could help our local restaurants as well to get their orders up. There is no details yet on this program. So we will be looking out for what comes from the state. There is no determination at this point, as I understand that I have seen of any detail as to, you know, how the funds would be distributed, who would be running this administratively, would it be coming directly to the cities or directly to the restaurants or directly to the citizens? So that's kind of still to be determined, I believe. City attorney might have.
There's a little more detail.
Okay, well, let the city attorney jump in.
There's a little more detail, though not the final rules or regulations about it. My understanding, though, is those have been sort of developed by the, I think it was called America's Kitchen Group that, that the People Helping People representative talked about earlier. And as he mentioned, they actually have been reaching out to a few restaurants already in solving about participating in the private program, which is now going to be a public program. The, the financing of it, actually, the city would have to put, as I understand it, the city would be fronting the money to restaurants. And then the city would receive reimbursement, 75% of the cost from FEMA and 75% of the remaining 25% from the state. So the city would be responsible for 25% of the 25%, which I think is about 5% or exactly 5%. The, the city also, in theory, would get the sales tax from those transactions. And they actually, they issued the dollar amounts that the restaurants would get. The restaurants would get, as I remember, $16 per breakfast, $17 per lunch, $28 per dinner, and $5 for, that could be used for tips or other things like that. So it's $66 per, per person, per day for three meals a day. You have to be 65 or older and either determined to be at risk. And my understanding is that, that this is a program where they're actually going to let the city make some of its own determinations. So the city would get to make the determination if you're at risk. Or 65 and older, and there's an income qualifier, which is that you can't make more than 67,000, no, I'm sorry, $76,500 per person. And those are the, those are the rules that I remember. The, the governor's office said that they're going to have the program actually operational this week, so I'm surprised we haven't heard more about it directly. My guess is, Scott may know more about this, since it seems like so many things that the governor brings forth start in San Francisco, where he used to be the mayor. So it wouldn't surprise me that, that this is a program that's already being rolled out in San Francisco, and we'll find out about it.
Scott, are you still there? Do you want to jump in?
Uh, yeah, so it's not something that came out of the city, to my knowledge. It was another nonprofit that had basically been doing this, and it was a way to get the funding. The program doesn't yet exist. It's something that he came up with, but to my knowledge, it doesn't, like, there's no way to sign up for it yet. So it is something that will come out here in the next few days. It's a little like the PPP and IDOL. They passed it. And now everybody's scrambling to figure out how to actually make it a thing. So hopefully, we'll get some more information from the state in the next week or so. But right now, it's, from what I can tell, unless, Chip, you see something different, from everybody I've chatted with, both in the city and the state, uh, city of San Francisco and in the state, it's, it's, there's no mechanism to actually make it happen yet.
Yeah, there's no mechanism to make it happen yet, and yet, there was a phone number that you could call to sign up. But I haven't tried calling the number, and I don't know what happens since there's no mechanism when you make that call.
Have they given the?
Maybe we should try calling it right now.
Yeah. Have they given the income threshold?
It's the state's COVID-19 resources number.
Income threshold?
Well, I thought, you just said that.
76,500.
76,500.
The income threshold is 76,500.
So are people going to have to provide their tax returns to be able to participate in this?
They haven't, they haven't told us those kinds of details. What they've told us is how much, how much your meals can cost and how much you can make.
This is socialism at its best. Great ideas without any follow-through. And by the way, you're telling me that these restaurants, restaurants can open to serve these people, but they can't stay open.
It's only delivery.
It's only for delivery.
It's delivery, and again, it, it came as a part of a three-part program. He's also going to include more people who will, who will talk to you if you're at home. And I'm sorry, I'm miss, I'm, at this point of the night, I'm forgetting what the third part was, but it was, it was a similar, you know, so that you wouldn't feel bad if, if you have to be at home. So that as part of his six points, as I understand, this is how he makes sure that people who are in the at-risk group stay home.
Right. So it sounds like, you know, there are some good parts to this program. It serves the seniors. It gives business to businesses. We can target certain areas of businesses that provide these meals. At the same time, it sounds like it may be quite a bit in terms of administrative servicing of this program of an effort. I mean, you're talking about a lot of meals and transactions. So if you can, I think at this point, since we don't have a program yet, but it's about to come out before we probably get together, if we could just get some general direction, if the city is interested in participating in this and start looking at different venues on how this could be administered and whether there is, once again, opportunity to partner with maybe some of the nonprofits for, you know, actual administrative arm of this.
I move that we do that, that we direct staff to do that.
May I, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I think the one thing that's clear from what was mentioned is that because of the, the years of democracy are a bit slow, our bureaucracy are a bit slow, they look to the city to sort of pay for the program and then seek reimbursement of FEMA and the state. So I, I think, I mean, again, I'm not a, a expert on how the city works, but I think that if the city, if the council's interested in exploring this program once we get more details, it would be helpful if the city votes on whether or not to approve the city manager releasing funds for this program, you know, with the intent to be reimbursed by the state and by FEMA. That way, we don't have to, you know, we work over the next four or five days to figure this out and then, you know, get the program and get some, some nonprofit partners on board next week. We won't then have to come back to the council to seek approval for the, for the spend before we can execute it. So that would give the city manager and, you know, our team can certainly help where necessary, permission to sort of roll forward with this as soon as it comes out and becomes more clear about what to do without coming back.
Well, I, I'd like to make the motion, that we go ahead and give you the direction and the authority that you need to move forward on this with, with speed.
Yeah. Do you want to put a limit on dollars or a limit on timing of how many funds I'm going to distribute?
At this point, I wouldn't put a limit on dollars, because we don't even know if the program exists or how big a program is going to be.
You can do a seed money and then see, you know, what the demand is.
How much do you recommend for seed money?
I don't know, 50,000.
Then I, I move that we go ahead and give you 50,000. Seed money to get moving on this. And I suppose you'll explore this with respect to FEMA reimbursements as well?
Yes. Well, it, it, from what I'm hearing here, before everything comes out in, in black and white writing, is that we would be fronting the money and then we would be waiting through the process to get reimbursed from FEMA.
But at least we'll have a platform by which to help families that need food and senior citizens specifically, if and when we, this thing gets worse.
Yes.
Right. I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mayor Perterm Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Dejornius?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yeah, I want to, I want to have the motion repeated, really, because kind of, I can barely hear.
Oh, so we're, we're essentially moving for the, to authorize the city manager to pursue this program with an initial seed fund of up to 50,000.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Mayor Tisant?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on to, and hopefully, we still have NDC online. Do we have Diana and Chuck?
So are we moving on to item six now?
No, we are moving.
Because NDC is item six.
It's item six, but this is, so I, I placed most of the discussion of NDC here under COVID-19, just so that you can give your direction in terms of what kind of programs you're looking for in cities work with NDC. And then the following item is just the contract itself, an authorization of the execution of the contract.
Oh, okay.
So Diana and Chuck, are, are you still with us?
Here.
Okay, here. Okay, good. So as you know, we talked, okay, I, I will keep my comments short and just turn it over to NDC. But last time, we first introduced the city to NDC, who works with different organizations and cities across the nation. We talked about some stabilization programs such as PPP and IDOL loans through SBA from federal funding. The feds did pass additional funding on Friday. We also can be looking at alternative city-funded microloan programs with, you know, more stringent underwriting criteria, working with NDC. They are looking through creative ways of finding how to potentially leverage city money for that type of program as well, just in case there's continued, you know, trouble, problems with reaching the PPP funding and the IDOL funding. And then we talked about recovery programs and revolving loans for, you know, the next steps. And then NDC, actually, you will see under their contract item, they are not only a loan program type of partner, but their contract also involves working with our jurisdiction on economic development strategies and seeking grant funds for economic development specifically, and then also working with the city when we have specific projects on financing mechanisms. So, and with that, before we move on, I just want to jump forward and say that out of our $250,000 that the city issued in microloans, there's actually three of those loans that are now being repaid. So that's really good news. I mean, those businesses are being very, you know, thankful to the city and giving the money back, understanding that that's the money that, you know, can help other businesses. So that's great to see, that we are starting to see that. They got their PPP loans, and so they're returning the $5,000 to the city. And with that, I'll turn it over to. Yes.
And that 5,000 we're getting back, that can be turned over to the people that didn't get it the first time, if they still need it?
It definitely can. So I think some, some of those things are the decisions that the council should make today, because we can either continue to just reissue that $5,000 under our microloan program, just the way we had it designed, or we can look at something different through NDC and create an alternative, you know, program with. with stringent, more stringent underwriting criteria. I mean, what we have is almost like a, you know, a grant, but obviously with great support of the community and they're understanding and being helpful in returning the money, so.
Just saying, because we had more, we had more applicants than we had money.
Yes.
So maybe the next three in line might be able to, if they still need it, if they haven't gotten their, their SBA money out.
Okay, thank you. So I think we should talk about further things first, and then if we desire to continue that after that, then we could evaluate that.
Okay, Diana and Chuck, do you have some new ideas for us?
Yeah, I was just gonna give a little bit of, of kind of an overview of what, what we, what we think makes sense to do. Uh, and then Diana has, has more detail. The challenge we have now with businesses, there's no economy effectively bringing revenue in, so we need to find ways to stabilize their economics and kind of cast, cast things in amber for a while. So the one, one thing that, that we definitely will be able, I think we'll be able to take advantage of is there's been a lot of talk about the payroll protection program, the PPP program. Uh, we, NDC, are actually a lender in the PPP program. Uh, we actually think that we'll be eligible for a set aside in that program that's specifically for community financial institutions. So our, so our system was, was shut down yesterday. We were so overwhelmed with applications. Unfortunately, when your, when your application website, it goes public, uh, you find a lot of people finding your website. So we're going through a lot of processes today trying to clear that backlog, but we think that there, we could be eligible for another round. Uh, and obviously, if that's true, then we would try and make sure that we're as aggressive and if a sole bank businesses that have not been able to get access to that program. Uh, there's been challenges in the financial world, but a lot of misinformation around the program. Uh, so we'll do whatever we can on, on that front. Um, and really, right now, that's the best program out there because it does provide potential grant resources, forgives loans, you know, for maintaining payroll. I, I think the second step is, is it's great that you've already got people recycling, you know, those micro grants that you guys were providing. So I think we do a lot of managing of revolving loan funds, revolving loan funds that NDC provides the capital to, as well as managing loan funds that cities are responsible for final decisions. So I think we can, we can try and bring, you know, uh, maybe a little, maybe some discipline and some order to help you uh, with another round of that, you know, you might want to direct it to certain kinds of costs. Uh, but again, making sure that we're underwriting softly, uh, but in a way that does try to make sure those dollars are gonna revolve and get repaid for other things. And I think we all recognize there's, this is not going to ensure business survival. We're going to need to find sources of capital as the economy starts moving forward. It's gonna take a long time before we're ready to go out and support businesses and they start generating revenues that they have expected in the past. So we're gonna have to look for capital. Um, so we in NDC, because of our lending license, we can go get and leverage dollars. Uh, so we're gonna scurry around on that. Diana and I have already talked about some other sources. Again, to try and leverage as much as we can to bring as much capital as possible to businesses. The main thing, recognizing that some businesses won't really fit within an SBA footprint. Um, but there are big businesses that will fit another footprint that we can lend to. So we're hoping to provide, find some more capital that we can kind of stand up upon uh, for as we start to enter the economy for businesses to have a, a cheaper source of capital, maybe put some pressure on their banks to step up with some capital as well.
So just to clarify, this is an alternative to the local banks or traditional bank channels that these businesses may already have, right? What happened?
Chuck? Hello?
I can't, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear the question.
So just to be clear, this is an additional channel for funds or funding that small businesses and solving can take advantage of. This is in addition to the existing relationships with local banks?
The PPP, yes, that would be in a, in addition to the relationships with their banks. Um, it, it would give them an alternative. Some of the banks, uh, some, some borrowers have had struggles with getting through. The banks have a large, um, a, a lot of, uh, of applications as well. And so, um, some borrowers have ended up in a long list and at the bottom of that list, um, we've encouraged people to apply both places. Um, because whoever gets you the SBA number first is, is the vaster you get some money. Um, and I would say, yes, yeah, it, it is, it is an alternative. Um, there's also, um, just people that have struggled with getting funding, um, just because they don't necessarily understand the application. And I do think our process will maybe a little bit more paperwork than a bank because we're not a bank. And so we have to make sure we're doing it to real people. Um, they're actually reaching out and communicating with the applicants. Um, and so making sure that we get the right paperwork, so hopefully it helps it move along better. Um, would you agree with me, Chuck, on that part?
Yeah, I, I think that that's right. We're basically trying to make sure that people that don't already have access have access to another door.
Excellent.
Okay, so as far as, I mean, maybe I'll just ask you a, a question, Diana and Chuck. What are your recommendations for, you know, actions in the next week? You just opened up the portal, there's new funding for PPP, you know, where do you see us going in the next couple of weeks before we come back to council?
Well, I think, I think, you know, like Chuck said, right now, our PPP is overwhelmed, so hopefully it will open back up and we'll also have additional funding coming our way, hopefully, so we'll be able to do something for. But I think what we need to do internally is, is, you know, sit, is sit down and look at what, what funding is available, what the needs are, you know, like Chuck said, maybe look at maybe a, an immediate program, you know, you guys have some money coming back, you know, maybe, you know, put it into, you know, a program that has a little more guidelines to it. Like what we've put together with, um, it's great that you guys have money, money that went out to people that got PPP loans and then paying them back. That's great. Um, there is obviously businesses that don't, but one of the big things that you want to make sure is that, what I keep telling my communities that I'm working with on doing loans or grants is the loans and grants that you do need to go to businesses that were viable before COVID. If they were not viable businesses before COVID, it's not gonna help that business keep staying. It, they'll, they'll still die. And, and that's not to say that every business that was, um, is, was successful before COVID won't, will survive. But our hope is that we'll help them, we'll help, we'll, we'll be in a better position to help them. And, and, and help those businesses be in a better position to survive.
Okay.
So I, I, what I'm saying is I think that we need to, to look at what the funding you have available and then, you know, like Chuck said, there's kind of a couple, a two-pronged approach in addition to the PPP of looking at, you know, maybe setting up a, a, a program that's kind of helping people, you know, maybe get ready to do the reopen and, and, and get those funding and, and then also maybe a, an additional program. We have, we are looking into the state program of I-Bank. Um, you know, there is, that is a, a, a state guarantee program. Um, and it is something that we've been in contact with Cal Coastal, which is one for Bay Area, I mean, for the coastal communities, including Solvang. And, and, um, and Cal, California Capital, and both programs can actually go statewide. And it is a, a state guarantee program and it got additional funding from the state. We are looking into seeing if there's an ability for us to leverage maybe Solvang funds or our fun, you know, our funds or something to also provide more funds to focus on Solvang instead of just, you know, statewide or, or, or coastal wide and stuff like that. So there, we're, that would be something we can definitely look into, whether there's additional grant funds that we can help you guys apply for. Those would be things that we would, we should sit down and look at and talk about what funds are currently available, what funds we can look at leveraging, what, what funds we can look at growing, are the things that I think that over the next couple of weeks we probably need to do. Um, in addition to the fact that PPP is something that's out there.
Can you come back to this council with a, a menu or a matrix of programs, uh, starting with the ones that, uh, help stabilize, uh, businesses immediately, uh, moving up to longer-term programs, including economic developments?
Yeah, that, that would be the intention, is to, to kind of look at the, the smattering of different ones that could, what would be effective in Solvang. Um, and that we could, um, and, and what, what they could do and what the sizes would be and what the, what, how we would implement them.
Excellent.
So this is, there's no, um, actionable item under this particular item on NDC. The contract is under the next, um, cover. Uh, so it's just questions if you have anything else. Otherwise, we'll work with NDC assuming you approve of the contract and come back at the next council meeting with specific recommendations.
Are you looking for a motion?
I don't really have any questions, but I, one of my concerns is just we keep talking about, you know, the, the footprint of, you know, some of these bigger programs, and I think the council just needs to note that, that, I, in my opinion, that footprint is probably what a large majority of our small businesses does not fit into. But that's just something to think about.
Well, that's where I think NDC is able and willing to come up with a customized program that may fit better to our needs.
That's a good point.
Right.
Well, and I, and I can say, you know, like I said, I'm throwing out ideas that we're sitting here talking about, but I know that sitting down with Dana and, and, and staff to talk about what actually makes sense for Solvang would be the total intention of what we would be trying to put together is something that makes sense for your community.
Right, and, and talking with Diana before, I also was letting her know that, you know, we have a survey uh, with IDK on, um, solvangresources.com that's still kind of going to where businesses are putting in their information in terms of what their needs are. So we could also feed some information that we've already been collecting to NDC to give them a better idea of, you know, what our local economy looks like. And then we can definitely discuss, you know, the size of our businesses and, you know, obviously, the hotels is a huge industry for us, but it's less businesses and then we have lots and lots of small businesses on the retail side. So we'll discuss those and come up with recommendations and come back to you.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you, Diana and Chuck.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying late. Oh, and, and your contract will be up next once we're done with this item. And the last item I have, or actually two items. So we're gonna have IDK, uh, give us a little bit of, uh, discussion on what they are proposing or what's in the works. They submitted a letter, um, kind of outlining some of the programs. We've touched base a little bit on the, uh, you know, the idea of closing Copenhagen, but I would let Scott give us a summary and then we can talk a little bit about the steering committee that's been formed. Scott?
Sure, so, uh, in light of the time, I'll be as brief as possible. So, um, basically, I included a couple of reports that have been updated by both US Travel uh, and Visit California, uh, that have some interesting, uh, interesting metrics in them. Um, most notably for us is that consumer or travelers continue to express interest in traveling as soon as it's safe to do so. And also, uh, travelers continue to seek destinations that they consider safe that are not as full of crowds and are drivable. So every indication is that Solvang will be well-positioned, um, you know, to take advantage of the recovery, uh, when that time comes, which is, is, is a bit of good news. Um, the other piece that I wanted to kind of point out is that we've, uh, begun work on a crawl, walk, run sort of, uh, marketing campaign for how we'll reopen. So, you know, what we'll do once social distancing and, uh, and some of the, the requirements, the health requirements have started to ease during the crawl period. Um, once they're a little more open and we can sort of dip our toe in the water of, of tourism again, um, you know, being respectful of the wishes of the community, the businesses, um, and everybody else, you know, that, that'd be the walk period. And then obviously, once the floodgates are open and we're back to, you know, normal from a health perspective, that'll be the run period and kind of deciding, uh, different strategy at each of those three stages. Um, as we mentioned a little bit earlier, the, the committee were almost fully committed to the folks that we've invited. Uh, most, if not all, have said yes. We are going to try and have our first meeting here in the next couple of days. Uh, we're just sorting out the logistics of, of doing that in person versus remotely. I did ask, you know, initially, if the mayor and the city manager would join that group, just in the, uh, in the spirit of efficiency, um, so that, you know, we could try and, and decrease the lag time between, here's what we want to do and here's what we can do. So, uh, the city manager will likely be a permanent role on the committee and the mayor will join, uh, during the COVID crisis. Uh, finally, uh, the thought, you know, we talked a little bit about slow streets. Uh, it just, you know, try to get a sense from the council if you think that that makes sense. Obviously, this is something we'll take to the, to the new committee, uh, once it's formed. Uh, we certainly don't want to hurt business. Uh, we know that, that closing Copenhagen in the past has been something that's been detrimental business. Uh, but I think that in this new situation and opportunity to invite folks to the downtown quarter in a safe way, um, you know, to pick up, take out or to, uh, you know, just go enjoy the sunshine a little bit and, uh, try and take advantage of the essential businesses that are open could be beneficial. So, uh, it's something we'll take to the committee, uh, as soon as we meet, but we wanted to run it by the council and get your opinions there. So I, it's a very brief version, uh, oh, I guess the other things worth mentioning is we put a big banner up on 246 thanking the essentials. I don't know if you've seen that yet. Um, and then, uh, we've also been working on translating all of the mayor's messages and press releases from the city into Spanish.
I was gonna say into English.
In the county data that, uh, a large percentage of, of the cases in San Barbara County are coming from, uh, the Hispanic community. So we've begun translating everything into Spanish and have begun placing ads in Spanish-language, uh, newspapers and digital forums, uh, to try and get some of the messaging out, uh, to an alternative market in the hopes that it helps decrease the case count so that we can all get back to normal.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
And if we can show my screen for a second. So those would be the, um, names of the committee members, just for you to get a heads up on that. And the first meeting is scheduled for next week.
I thought this week.
Oh, this week, sorry. Yes, hi.
Is it too late to make suggestions or comments about the list?
No, I mean, you can make comments anytime.
I just wish there was, if somebody with some medical experience on that list, as well as maybe, um, like a Chris Parker, someone like that that runs the Etterdick Village that has input, because it's a lot of merchant, um, uh, strength there, but not, I don't see any, any medical or any, anybody that's dealing with, um, with senior citizens, et cetera. If we could somehow reach out to a couple more people?
We can, let me just, I'm sorry, Scott.
Go ahead, Scott.
I was just gonna say, you know, that was quasi-intentional for, in two ways. One, if you remember, we're trying to repurpose our initial kind of steering committee on marketing and tourism. But secondly, uh, unless, you know, certainly within the purview of the council to redirect us, but, uh, it was my initial sort of plan that the, the health-related aspects of the recovery would happen above sort of this group and this group would respond to what was appropriate. And I didn't want to put, you know, that, that health question to this type of, of staff committee because I didn't feel like it would be serving the city in the right way.
Okay, and I was a little mixed up on my, my goal there, so I appreciate that, Scott, thanks.
Okay.
You may also want to, to, uh, correct the spelling on a couple of people.
Yes, no, I-
Well, Dana Volk, but in particular Tracy Brad.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, this was a-
That's my fault. I literally was typing these in a text message to Dana, I apologize.
This came from a text message, so, yes.
No disrespect to anybody on that list.
It's, uh, Tracy Beard and, yes. So we, we will have the right people, though we know who they are and we'll have the right people listed going forward and on the committee.
Karen, do you have any comments?
No.
No, okay.
Okay, so keep moving. Uh, the last item I have under COVID-19 is just giving you a brief update, um, on the programs that you had, uh, through end of May. Uh, you may now- brief update on the programs that you had through end of May, you may now or at a later point extend those to a future date, so on the utility billing waiver, fees and penalties, we only had two requests from customers for non-payment, we have seventeen accounts that would otherwise have been in a shut-off type of situation that are not being shut-off, and we got on the TOT penalties waiver, this is for February months, there is six hotels that have not paid, two of them have not reported yet what their TOT would have been, forty-one thousand is not collected based on four hotels reporting, and then we collect a total of $222,000 for the months of February. And then, once again, on the business microloan program, there is three businesses that are in the process of sending us their payments, they have notified us, and so that is a program that you can either just wait to see what we can come up with with NDC and return to you at the next council meeting, or you can direct us to just go ahead and keep reissuing these $5,000 loans to people that have already submitted applications and are standing in line, so if there is.
How many further people are in the microloan line that haven't received them?
I believe the fully submitted applications are actually three at this point, so this would be, it's a three-to-three right now.
Okay.
There was more people that had, you know, inquired and may have been told that, you know, the funds are not available, so if we, you know, continued to run this program officially and they knew that they would still be in the queue, so we might get more applications. So I think some of the decision points right now, all of these programs are through May, so you can just leave it through May right now and see what else happens with the county orders, since the county order is through May, you still have a couple of meetings to make those adjustments, and then on the business microloan, if you can let us know whether to continue to reissue these loans or to just see what we can come up with in terms of working with NDC.
Okay, does anyone have any ideas?
It's, I'm mixed on that, I mean, if NDC, NDC is, if NDC is working on it, then I think we're okay there.
What do you guys think? And Karen, you want to put that 5,000 or the 15,000 back into the pool?
I, I think it just depends on what the intent is, I don't know what the, or how many other inquiries that we had, had there, or what other programs we can come up with, I think we're at the end of the month, I don't know about the rest of the council, but, you know, I've been contacted by a lot of businesses that are freaking out over how to get now through the next month, because the microloan kind of helped them through the.
The first month.
The first month, you know, and we all kind of knew that's only gonna do the first month, I was hoping we would have the PPP and all these other promises would have actually performed, and that, and then that would, you know, be the cash flow agent that got us through to that, but my faith in these programs is pretty low at this point with those, but the, I was hoping that we'd come up with at least some kind of extended loan program to issue out, I just don't, I'm not seeing where those are ready to go or how it's gonna help anyone at this next cash crunch there.
I'm not sure where you're going with this, because I, I agree with you.
I'm just, I'm just throwing things out for the council to talk about, I'm not indicating any direction.
No, I, I'm not disagreeing with you in the sense that this $250,000 went a long way for some of these businesses, such that they were not able to get the, even though they did get approval for PPP, they didn't get the amount that they had requested, and in some cases, they didn't get the PPP at all, so this was the only money they got, and they're very grateful for it, and if we can somehow leave that program intact and keep rolling it forward to help these people until these bigger programs are put in place, I think that's a great idea, that's the only idea on the table.
All right, I agree with that, good.
I mean, really, we only had about 15,000, right, so that's three applicants that had repaid, so.
Yeah, well, technically.
But if we keep going, as we get more returns.
Correct, I understand, but at this.
We can offer out other people as well.
Agreed. At this point, I, I don't know that, I think we should continue on with it, and, you know, I think we've already kind of decided that it's a possibility we will not get this money back, but in the interest of the city and the businesses, if it can help them to, to get through another month, and people see that we're reloaning it back out, they may be more apt to pay it back if they can to help other businesses, you know, it's kind of a community effort.
Again, the, the second round of PPP is just now being done, right, and that too will take weeks, so this may be the only funding they have until that happens.
All right, let's keep it going.
Okay, is that the motion to keep it going?
So, keep going, same funding amount.
I'll make a motion to keep the microloan program going.
I'll second it.
Okay, first and second.
By the way, have we discussed the?
We haven't discussed, no.
I'm thinking aloud about the, the problem with the rent moratorium or the eviction moratorium, at some point, these things have to be paid back, and a lot of these businesses haven't seen any revenue now for two months, they'll be going on three months by the time we reopen.
So, can I, if there is a motion and a second, can I take a roll call and then?
Oh, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
But just to clarify, so it's just gonna keep the same, same funding amount.
Correct.
But as a cash flows in, it can cash flow out.
Go back down, correct.
Mayor Perterm Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Dejornius?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Tassant?
Yes.
Okay, passes five oh, and on the rent moratorium, we touched on it a little bit before, yes, there is, you know, there's obviously going to be non-payment of the rents, but the actual obligation to pay at some point is not going away, so it's, it's not, it, it's a cash flow, but not, there's still a funding, financing issue there, so if Chuck and Diana are still there, I think we kind of touched upon that issue earlier today, if you would like to jump in again and see if you have any ideas on how future potential lending programs could be structured around this issue, and just kind of being more directive in terms of where the loans go and what, what are they being used for.
Well, I would just say from our experience, there's no, there's no one answer about how to deploy loan capital, you know, and unless you're gonna get very, very aggressive and kind of managing funds, so, so in a sense, the lender makes payments rather than trusting the business, which we've done in some cases, because we wanted to make sure that the money went to where, where it goes to go, I, I, I think, I think the best option is to recognize that the different businesses have different emergent needs, it's great that a lot of people are providing payment flexibility for businesses just like they are with, with regular individuals, the challenge is that that doesn't eliminate the payment, it just defers it, and so depending on when that payment becomes due as they're coming out of, out of this pause and we're entering a slowly emerging economy, now they've got more costs, because now they have to catch up with their rent, so in the same way that the payroll protection program even as, as kind of flawed its rollout has been, I mean, the idea is at least that it would pay these expenses to keep businesses in place, some of those dollars could be used for rent or debt service or other expenses, so I think you want to be able to be, to allow businesses to kind of let you know what their immediate need is, I mean, they may own their real estate, so it's not rent that they're worried about, it's the bank loan or it's something else, but I think, but I think trying to make sure that your funds are used to tease the deferral of an expense, so that that, so that that expense is not higher later, creating a bigger hole for them to come out of, is a good way of applying funds right now.
Right, I'm just concerned that, that these people are gonna hit a wall and have to pay it all at once, and they're gonna need some kind of help getting over that wall, so I appreciate you, your comments on that, and have we talked to some of the landlords in town and gotten their input on this? Some of them have been fantastic and very supportive of the businesses structuring, you know, deferring payments and things, others, not very helpful at all, maybe they have their own issues.
Like I said before, you know, most of the questions that I've been getting are just about what is this moratorium, how does it work, what are everybody's rights?
Right, right, and this may go a long way to helping ease those fears and concerns, if we can help bridge that gap or help ease the, the pain as they defer the payments.
I think just possibly having some sort of document that we can pull that would explain it to some of these, you know, the landlords and then also to the tenants.
Right.
And provide them with documentation, it's not necessarily our responsibility to do the negotiating between the landlord and the tenants and the banks and whatnot, but at least give them the legal side so that they know what their rights are, maybe we can even post it on our resources website, so the document's sitting there and they can go there and read it and find out exactly what their rights are.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and I liked your comment at the beginning about, you know, some landlords have done a really good job about, excuse me, about talking to their tenants and working things out, and as I said two weeks ago, I wish this wasn't even on the docket, because any smart landlord, I, I, I have to reiterate this, why would you evict someone unless there's somebody that's got some really grand, long-term plan for a certain unit in town? Why would you evict someone that you're not gonna get somebody to fill that space? I, I don't understand it, and then when the economy does come back and we get back up running, bingo, there's your tenant, so what's the deal? It either sits empty and you get no money whatsoever, or you work with the person and he's your friend for life, I don't know, I'm too simple, but that's my take on it.
Well, thanks for commenting, I love it, I agree, I think everybody needs to work together if we're gonna survive, so I'd love to see more cooperation, especially from some of these landlords that don't seem to get it.
Okay, we'll put together some informational sheets and put that on the websites and have that available for people.
Great.
Karen, do you have any comments?
No, no comments.
Okay.
All right, and that concludes item number five.
Okay, that was one long item.
Yes.
So with that, I'll make, I'll make the motion that we continue on with the meeting, maybe another five-minute breather.
Sure.
And then we'll do the, the contracts should be pretty quick, and then, but the financial plan could be a little bit longer.
Yeah, I mean, the financial plan is, you know, there's just some information, most of your actions will be at the next meeting, so it's up to you if you want to continue to hear today and just get some more information and then have a bigger budget discussion at the next council meeting.
All right, well, I'll make the motion to continue after a five-minute break, we can always get to item seven, if we want to call it, then we can call it.
I second it.
So move to seconded?
Yes.
Mayor Perterm Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Dejornius?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
No, I'd like to just continue and get this done.
Because you're at home, so that's a yes.
Mayor Tassant?
Yes.
Okay. All right, five minutes.
All right, ready? So resume the meeting, we're on to item number six now, National Development Council contract approval, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So the recommendation is to approve a contract to engage with National Development Council in the amount of $50,000 for a period of time of 12 months, it's a monthly retainer type of fee, the contract itself starts on page 268 of your packet. The contract itself starts on page 268 of your packet. The report basically talks about everything that we've talked about under the previous item. The scope of NDC would be to work with the city to develop different loan programs as well as work with the city to seek any additional funds from potential economic development grants and funding sources from federal and state governments. And to work with the city on any development projects that may be going on with the city. In this time period, they've already engaged even before we approve or before the council has taken an action on this item. They've already been engaged in the one project that we have going on at the Vets Hall. And have been on calls with the developer and kind of discussing the strategies of, you know, what could be the new next steps in terms of that project development, developments, some of the things that would need to be negotiated, looking at the costs and things like that. So once again, it's a retainer for those pretty diverse services from NDC. My understanding is that their staff, you know, they, they work together and pool in each other's expertise. Diana has been kind of the one working with me the most. Obviously, Chuck is there a lot, but they have others on staff as well. They're a nonprofit organization and they primarily come from backgrounds in redevelopment and financing. So those all go along with what the city will need as part of the recovery from COVID-19. So the recommendation is to go ahead and approve this contract as a priority. Funding for, you know, a very essential business for the city in this time of COVID-19 recovery. And obviously, the long-term economic recovery that the city will also need to engage in.
Are there any questions of the staff report?
So my only question is if, as, as Mayor, as Ryan pointed out, if they don't have some viable, you know, loan options or solutions or whatnot. These things and they say, well, this is really going to work for only 2% of your city, or we really don't have a lot to offer for your city, or.
Yeah, this is a retainer contract, so we are basically hiring them to be our contractor firm. We are becoming, what we get by entering into this contract, we become their service community. So when they talk about, you know, having their portal and having their specific designation through the nonprofit to maybe be ahead of some of the other distributors of those PPP loans. Those things apply to their client communities. So with this, we are becoming their client community. And, you know, looking to partner and work with them in the hopes that, you know, that helps us get the funding. If we don't get the federal funding, we obviously still get the expertise from the fact that they actually are a licensed lender, unlike the city. So we get all the expertise of underwriting and creating those programs rather than trying to come up with it in-house, which is really not our line of business.
Is a client community a customer pool?
It is a customer pool, yes. So it's just over $4,000 a month, I believe, to have this expertise. And I mean, so far, they've been, like I said, they've already gotten engaged with us, even, you know, jumped on the calls with the project on the Vets Hall, have made some initial remarks and recommendations on, you know, it, it's going to be a multi-jurisdictional financing of this project goes forward. So there's quite a bit of financing expertise that's needed and reviewing project specs and whatnot. So we would get all of that service with this contract in addition to the loan programs. So it's more of kind of your economic development, support for businesses, grow businesses type of service. And that's what they do when, you know, when it's not an emergency operations like we are in now. What they do is work with communities to do economic development and create programs and help businesses grow. So even as we come out of, you know, whatever the economic consequences are of COVID-19, they could even then continue to work if the city is, you know, happy with their services to.
Yeah, I guess my concern is we've, we've hired various organizations and people to do this sort of thing before as organizational or on economic growth. I just want to make sure that we are, that we have certain tasks that they're going to accomplish, that it's not just something that they just keep kind of.
Well, the, the different thing with this contract is it is a retainer. So for $4,000, you know, it's either you are happy or not happy with their services. Obviously, this one commits you to 12 months of a retainer. But we are also in quite a bit of a need right now in terms of getting help with creating programs for lending. And we know we have at least one project in the queue that they can be helpful with, and there may be more. We have hired, or in my time, there's been another econ-development firm hired. And I think they have some overlapping type of expertise and some different expertise. But that contract is almost at an end and we can definitely, you know, talk going forward about how to move forward with economic development type of efforts on that side. But we have not hired before and we don't have the internal expertise in lending services.
Karen, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, if you have any questions, it's straightforward. Thanks.
Okay. With that, we'll go to public comment. I know we've received nothing on this item. Do we have any callers? No callers. With that, we'll take it back to the council for discussion action. Would anyone like to start?
Any help we can give our residents is a step in the right direction.
This is pretty straightforward.
I would echo, you know, Daniel's comments earlier about specific task and making sure that we're really pointed in what we, you know,
Right.
are looking for and we're covered, especially as you engage in a 12-month commitment. That, you know, if we do recognize something that is of need and we want to get that done, then, you know, I don't want to then have another contract in front of me saying that we, another 5,000 a month or something like that for that.
Right. So, I mean, I would just, you know, encourage you right now to just look at the terms of their scope of services. And it's really, I think, probably page 272 is the one that's most telling and that you need to be looking at in, you know, understanding what services you're paying for. It is somewhat broad. But those, there's points 1, 2, 3. And so the first one would be assistance with small businesses experiencing hardship during the COVID-19 crisis. And available emergency small business administration, SBA products, including the paycheck protection program. Assistance on establishment of small businesses loan programs to help businesses grow once the COVID-19 crisis is over through either existing fund, applications for new funding, or providing leverage through NDC Grow America Fund. And assistance with COVID-19 funding for reimbursement of city costs.
And if I could add, you guys, it also, there's a 30-day either-party-can-cancel clause, so.
Okay.
Right. Yes.
Could we make that a 60-day?
You, you're better off with a 30. I think it's a 30-day cancellation policy on it, right?
Yep.
Yeah. 30, no notice to cancel.
Yeah, but my feeling is, I don't know that we're going to know after 30 days.
Oh, you don't have to cancel.
It's any, any 30 days that you want.
Oh.
So if 90 days from now, you don't like them.
I was trying, where he was going with that.
You can notice at any time and provide notice of 30 days.
At any 30-day interval, yes. Yes. That was your biggest concern.
All of our contracts are written that way.
Perfect.
Except ours.
Wow. We actually have a decent contract for a change, unlike previous councils.
There you go again.
He has to do it.
So once again, it's a cost of.
Apparently, we didn't pay our previous attorney enough money to write a decent contract.
Mute. Mute.
Cost of just over $4,000, cancellation policy of 30 days.
I'll make the motion that we accept staff's recommendation to engage in a contract with NDC.
I'll second the motion.
Spin. Motion on the floor. Mayor Perterm Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Dejornius?
Of course.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Tassant?
Yes.
Pass this five-year-old.
Okay.
Thank you, Chuck and Diane. We'll be in touch.
Oh, thank you for staying up late. Really appreciate you hanging in there.
We'll get, we'll get to work now. Thank you.
Good night.
Finally.
Oh, sure.
All right. Can't even keep a straight face now. All right, so on to, on to item number seven. Preliminary 2020, 22 through 22, financial plan forecasts and policy recommendations. Staff report.
Okay, let me just pull this up.
What happened?
Okay, so this item here is just kind of working towards, from the last time we discussed the budget, towards coming to you with an actual preliminary financial plan. So this is focused more on kind of the, a little bit more of a detailed forecast than what I showed last time. We are almost done with our proposed budget for including, you know, all of the forecasts on existing staffing recommendations for the next year, including contract services, staffing, special projects, and capital improvement program. I think what's important to notice once again with this financial plan is that we are developing this in the, you know, the time of COVID-19 and lots of uncertainty. I just wanted, at the next meeting of the council on May 11, we will look at the specifics that you will have to work through in terms of recognizing what you would want to see in an adopted budget and for financial plan from a programmatic perspective. But some of the things to keep in mind is, of course, once again, the revenue and expenditures and much of the unknown. I thought there was a little, some good information coming from our sales tax consultant on, for example, the state budget, and as we talk about these reimbursements from the state or, you know, when we don't qualify as a county for the CARES program that gives us direct funding and goes through the state, what's the real likelihood of any of those types of funds to actually trickle down to the city? And so some of the interesting information was that the state estimates a potential drop in their current fiscal year of $35 billion. Their current general fund budget stands at only $147 billion. The shortfall could increase to upward of $80 billion is what they're projecting. And the state's rainy day fund only holds about 17 million. So we're looking at much gloomer, frankly, right? So reimbursement from the state is definitely, you know, is questionable here, looking at this. And of course, the discussion is, you know, will the, as you know, I mean, economic forecasts are kind of all over the place. You know, some people want to be more optimistic. Some people are being maybe more realistic in looking at, you know, the impacts of 9/11 and then the great recession. And then the impact of this economic closure. And so the question is whether, you know, the reopening will be U-shaped, where when we reopen, everything will more or less just go back to normal. Or is it a really L-shaped recovery to where we go through much more an experience like the great recession or even worse than that.
Well, doesn't this depend on the psychology of the consumer? As long as we keep scaring them into staying at home, I don't know that this is going to get any better.
That is why some people, I think, do, you know, more optimistic forecasts in the hopes that consumer confidence actually comes back and, and we return to normal. So the only available funding for the city at this point is through FEMA. FEMA is just a general reimbursement as usual. It's for essential response expenditures to COVID-19. It primarily, you know, covers only medical supplies, direct supplies for the response, and some overtime for specifically emergency operations center. That is kind of all it covers except for they have made this clarification for the COVID-19 that purchase and food distribution actually qualifies on the FEMA.
What about testing?
Do we normally staff the EOC here in solving?
We would. We have an emergency manual. We have roles, responsibilities, work charts.
Do we normally have staff in the EOC?
If we were in an active type of emergency, like if there was a fire, yes, this room would be created into an EOC and we have all of that.
I was going if there was no staff there. So staff is usually zero. And now they've all been reassigned to the EOC. Is, is that all qualify as overtime?
Only overtime, not, not your regular salary, no.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So you want to keep them.
Only overtime and only overtime.
Keep them in the EOC and bill it all to them.
So after they do their eight hours, they come over to the EOC?
I'm just trying to move our personnel budget into the FEMA EOC category.
Unfortunately, FEMA is pretty limited in what they.
Yeah, we're not, we're not getting anything from many go over many.
No, I know. I'm just, I've been.
What, what about testing?
It's kind of my point.
What about testing kits and diagnostic stuff? Are we going to get any help from that, from FEMA?
Testing kits should be eligible, yes, for, yes, for specific, you know, regulations responding to regulations which.
We'd have to buy those and then get reimbursed by FEMA.
Yes.
Yeah, but this goes to item number one of Newsom's new ideas. Apparently, we're supposed to have a bunch of testing, tracing, and tracking systems in place. How do we do that?
Well, the store that has them is closed.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Eventually, we'll.
It's not essential.
So.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Anyway, going on, as we have discussed already, solving is especially impacted because it's heavily reliant on tourism. We have 22 hotels that provide us with 50% of general fund revenue from transit occupancy tax. And then from our sales tax base, we also get about 50% from tourism-based industry. So we are very heavily into tourism economy in terms of our general fund revenue. The city estimates direct loss in revenue of approximately $2 million in the current fiscal year from those two sources. And then also an estimated another $2 million in the next fiscal year as well.
So you only see a loss of $2 million through June 30?
Yes.
That's your optimistic forecast?
That's my realistic forecast.
What's your worst case?
There isn't much more revenue to lose. I mean.
Well, that's your worst case. Well, I mean, did you take into consideration any?
What about like fees for services?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Or additional expenses, like even the microloan program is still quarter million dollars, you know, it, it is cash out of the bank. And so you can't count on that, you know, so I, I look at those things as an expense, especially when a lot of these things are very high risk, you know, but we're doing everything we can. And then as we launch other programs, you know, relative to like this NDC thing earlier or anything relative to, you know, food and stuff like that, I again see all those as costs. Because, I mean, just kind of like what a lot of businesses learn with the PPP load program, you know, the, they told, oh, keep everyone on payroll, the PPP will take care of you. And then everyone exhausted the rest of their money out of their accounts and got no PPP money. And now they're in even more of a sorry situation. Are they going to now make the cities start, you know, expelling money, you know, that, oh, FEMA will take care of you. And then, you know, there's no FEMA, you know, they're not going to take care of you tomorrow. So I don't count on seeing anything that we spend ever coming back. And I think that that's the right way to manage cash flow.
My point to you was that apparently service charges are a significant source of income for the city. And it's like $750,000. Then there's a miscellaneous, this is in 2019. And there was another $120,000 under miscellaneous. So that's over 850,000 bucks, some, somewhere in that neighborhood. Are we going to see that decline?
Well, it depends. I mean, I would have to.
What page is that sheet on again?
That's from the CAFER.
Service charges for obviously recreation program are going to go to zero right now.
But that amount was tiny.
That's a tiny amount, right?
No, I'm simply saying that apparently there's a category called service charges under CAFER and budget reporting. It's significant. And I'm going to guess that we're not going to see any of that. So it could be worse than 2 million.
Well, but fees for services, if that's the area in the CAFER that you're, you know, that, that also includes things like,
Planning and development.
pass-through cost and/or, you know, we don't even recover the cost that it really is, but it could be for planning-type fees, which I would expect to go down. type fees, which I would expect to go down.
No.
Obviously during this time.
Oh, I'm just suggesting $2 million is probably your best-case scenario. Two and a half million is probably.
Yeah, I think there's more than, you know. But once you add in the expense side, because I, I, you have to look at things from a cash perspective, not right now, not in accrual. And we can't write a check out of receivables, we can't write a check out of, you know, IOUs that, you know.
Right. So, I mean.
FEMA might pay.
The way I had structured this report was based on budget or otherwise recognizable, you know, revenues and expenditures. There's also the cash flow to it, which I kind of keep a list in this report as to what cash flows we already have. Obviously, there is much consideration on the cash flow going forward with the next financial plan development in terms of just cash going out the door and when it's going to come back. Now, the city holds multiple funds, so our overall cash is pretty healthy right now. I believe it's about $26 million. We can also do our own inter-fund borrowing and floating cash, but it is risky. And so, we can definitely create another forecast on just not budgetary, but cash basis to show that risk. So.
You think that $2 million for 2020, 21 is the best-case scenario?
Well, let's get into those. I think it's a moderate case scenario. It assumes that we don't have a secondary outbreak of COVID, we don't shut down again, and that at some point into the summer, we begin to reopen. So if, if I can continue with this, we have.
This is bad.
Additional cash flow issue that I mentioned here is that the state has allowed sales tax payment deferral for up to 12 months to businesses that are $5 million per year or less in total revenue. So, most of our businesses actually do qualify for that. And so, if they were to not submit their sales tax payments and hold off on those for 12 months, we are looking at about another $6,000, $600,000 not being received over the next year. The council has already took some actions for the 2020, 22 financial plan. As we went along, that will be, you know, worked into that financial plan. You have reduced ongoing operating expenditures by $1 million in non-essential services. That's an ongoing decrease. You have entered into a contract with IDK for the 2020, 21 fiscal year with expenditures directly tied to TOT, received and capped at 12% of receipts. So that's a kind of a no loss to the city. If the TOT continues to struggle, then IDK is not going to be an expenditure that exceeds, you know, that funding structure. And then you directed staff to address unfunded liabilities, which is something that we talked about before. Obviously, Culpers has not acted on additional actions, but it's very possible that they could. And then those expenditures would go up dramatically. You have limited the grant program to humanitarian services only with focus on senior services. So we're basically talking senior centers definitely going to be interested in applying again. You directed staff to enter into negotiations with Everhuy Museum for ongoing partnership, and that's in the works. So, on May 11, we will present to you an actual put-together budget with the details and the programmatic, just recommendations for consideration, and have a detailed discussion on the, you know, capital improvement needs that you may want to consider to continue going forward with, as well as contract services and staffing levels. So, staff recommends that for the preliminary financial plan, general direction is that should be funding essential services only, should be funding COVID-19 response, should be funding and prioritizing economic development and then investment in key infrastructure. And then also that the focus on the financial policies should be to continue to hold reserves for other non-COVID emergencies and sharp economic downturn. So not transfer all the reserves, but to continue holding those steady and make other adjustments to operations as needed. And then to focus on long-term fiscal health, investment in key strategic infrastructure, reduction of existing unfunded liabilities, and a risk for future unfunded liabilities, to focus on economic development strategy, and for, to focus on full cost recovery for non-essential services. So then we would be talking about those policies to update some of our fees and seek full recovery. And then I have attached to this report just a little bit more detail, and unfortunately, this is going to be sideways. Let me see if I can. Well, you have it in your packets.
Yes.
Okay. So this chart here on TOT, which is page. I don't have a page actually. 283. It shows on a monthly basis, TOT, and the bottom line of the chart on the top here is your totals for 18, 19, so those are the actuals. And then you have your occupancy rates, and then you have the total TOT for 2019, 20. And so you see the totals that were received to date, and then expectations for the rest of the fiscal year. So, you see in February, we only got $222,000. It indicates that $41,000 was uncollected, but has been reported. We're still waiting on a couple of hotels that did not comply with reporting of their TOT. And then I'm basically holding the rest of the fiscal year at zero, because my expectation is that, A, there's going to be little to none receivable TOT, and most likely, it's not going to be paid. So, I'm rejecting total TOT for the rest of the year at $2.9 million. And then my forecast for the next fiscal year is actually almost more dire than even current fiscal year, just because of looking at how the tourism industry is going to recover. And I took this kind of approach from Oxford Economics that IDK has provided us with, as they keep an eye on the tourism market. And so, the next page after this chart actually shows a page on projected COVID-19 impact on tourism industry revenue. And so I kind of mimicked that, except that on their chart, they are, you know, really low in April and starting to open up in May. They are obviously behind that trajectory. So I am basically looking at, you know, by the month of July, if we start to reopen, maybe looking at like about 25% occupancy. It says there in assumptions. And then, based on this type of recovery trajectory, looking through the next years, you know, over the months, we go up to about 45%, and then 70%, and then hopefully by next summer to 100%. And so that gets me a number of about $2.5 million only in the next year's TOT. So it's still a huge decline. Before we.
And that, that's assuming we don't have another resurgence of the virus.
Exactly, right. Which is possible.
So, that's an optimistic view.
That's an optimistic view. Or, well, I would call it a moderate. I would say that's a moderate view. Before COVID-19, though, just to note, in the months through January, on average, we were 2% up from the previous year. So we were growing at 2%.
Things were going in the right direction, that's for sure. You know, the thing I caution you, or at least encourage you guys to do, is look more at the LA markets and how they're recovering. I don't know how this Oxford model would, you know, looks, how it maps or overlays to our economy. But since most of the travelers come from Southern California, if they're not doing well, that would be, you know, that would certainly affect us. We should be looking at them and how they're recovering.
Right. And, you know, I think we kind of went through quickly through the IDK discussion, but there was also an item attached to that that talked about the sentiment of tourism economy that was based on surveys that are being done monthly, and how that's looking. And so, there is an indication that people are preferring staycation. But then there was also an indication that for some people, staycation means literally staying home. Yet, yet, you know.
But you can't enjoy it.
Yet they also indicate that, you know, they're more likely to get in a car and drive somewhere that they can reach. So there's some hope for us to be able to still get that LA traffic that want to get out of the big city and come to Solvang. So that is something that IDK will be focusing on in terms of their, you know, outreach and campaign, once we begin to reopen. And so if you go to the next page, there is a chart that looks like this on sales tax. This comes from our consultant, Muni Services, that looks and audits our sales tax data. And this particular chart is for quarter four of 2019. So that captures now October, November, and December. And actually, this was a positive trend as well. If you can see, you know, these are the categories for City of Solvang for sales tax. Our restaurants in the last quarter before COVID-19 were 3.4% higher than the previous year. And were also 3.7% up from previous year annually. Oops. And I think that's the wrong chart, actually. Sorry. I will provide you with a different one that talks about categories. But then, the next chart here talks about economic sales tax by benchmark by year. And that's a tool that Muni Services has put together and provided. They've done some general forecasting in terms of, you know, what they see by industry kind of statewide. And then they provided this tool to where municipalities can decrease the numbers even further, just by knowing our economy here. And so this shows here that based on what we have seen in our trends in just operations in the city, we're looking at about a loss of $408,000 in sales tax this year.
This year?
This year. And then I'm going to fast-forward to their forecast for sales tax for the general fund due to COVID-19, and Muni Services is projecting a loss of minus 10% for the next fiscal year. So they are looking at a negative 10% over the next year. And that may be even more, you know, drastic for the City of Solvang because of our overreliance on.
Tourism.
Tourism. And then there is the forecast for general fund that's included in there. You can see some numbers for revenues and expenditures. The ones that I think are the drivers for you to start to think about are definitely, we have the TOT and the sales tax that are significantly declined and continue to be in a decline kind of throughout this forecast period. So you're losing, you know, $2 million in current fiscal year, about $2 million in the next fiscal year. You have your salaries and benefits that are saving us now $1 million. And then you have other kind of drivers that we need to talk about with the financial plan development that are going to be your services, which are basically your, all of your contracted services there. You're looking at tourism, which I have here at a lower number for the next year, assuming the TOT decline on the revenue side, and assuming that, you know, or knowing that we're entering into a contract with IDK, then our expenditures on the TOT should also be lower. And then, of course, there's a capital improvement program at the bottom that we'll need to prioritize at the next council meeting. And so just briefly looking at just this one scenario, we are significantly drawing on, you know, available fund balance by the end of the five years to an amount of about $3 million. So also kind of just considerations going forward, the recommendations.
Can you repeat that last, that last sentence?
So if, if this was the forecast and there were no changes made, then by the end of the five-year forecast, you would draw on existing reserves by about $3 million.
Are there any questions of the staff report?
No.
Karen? Bueller?
Anyone? Anyone?
Anyone?
We have one?
Oh, did it drop her?
Are we out of time? You should always split on 1 o'clock.
Did we run out of quarters?
Oh, my God.
So there is no actionable item here. It's just receive and file, unless you have any specific questions, desires.
Is there, I hate to tell you this, can you do a, I hate to, yeah, because unfortunately, you're talking about an optimistic view. And if we do have another shutdown thanks to Newsom, we could lose another million or two. And then the question is, what do we do then?
Let's give it, I agree with you. I said, let's give it a month. Let's, let's see if we start to see some, just a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel and, and get a better feel for making a redoing our projections at that time.
Well, we have another meeting. We're going to discuss the actual budget.
That's why I was hoping to get some kind of a stress test on this before then. I guess I'd just do it myself.
You can just make that assumption on your own. I mean, we're the city council, and we make our own assumptions about how much worse it could get.
No, the problem is that we're going to have to cut deeper.
Yeah. We might only have a wastewater treatment plant and water by the time we're.
Yeah, we'll fire ourselves. We're done. We're out of here.
Hey, that's more payroll savings.
That would bring everybody out to the streets.
It's pretty, it's pretty small, but, you know.
Well, I think the conversation is, there's so much unknown. I think the conversation around the budget is more focused on structural changes, and how do you want to structure your revenue streams with your expenditures, and what do you want to prioritize?
And we'll talk about diversification in the future.
So did we get Karen back? So I'm going to call her right now.
This is abysmal.
What?
Hello?
Are we, we're still on the air, correct?
Yes. Yeah, count my three still on this thing. And YouTube, just the Zoom meeting I have to set up, start and end time for it. And I thought 11:00 PM would be safe.
I would have thought that, too.
That's beat, yeah. Why are services going up from an average of $990 million to $1.6 million?
That's based on actuals.
That's expenditures are going up that fast?
That is our actuals for this year.
What does this, what does it entail? I'm not looking at the expenditures.
Contracts.
Contracts, okay. And cutting the CRD contract didn't do anything to the
Yes.
county contracted services? Wow.
Well, I mean, unfortunately, all that stuff, you know, as well, we're nearing the end of the year. Cutting contracts now, plus even the cost to do so, doesn't really.
No, I, for this year, I get it. But for next year, I, I would have thought a $300,000 cut would have been reflected here. Barely.
Daniel has a comment.
Daniel?
A motion to do what? We have to make a motion to do that?
Yes.
You can.
Can. Or you can give some direction. You're still, what was that?
If there, if there is anything specific that you would like to see with your, you know. If there, if there is anything specific that you would like to see with your, you know, item on budget discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to look at the whole thing with Calpers. I think we're gonna have to look at stopping any catch-up payments. Letting them know, no, you don't get to, we can't afford this. We'll pay the minimum. But I don't see why we should be doing catch-up payments. We're just throwing.
We only pay, we have not paid anything above their requirement per the contract for both normal and unfunded liability.
So the Calpers UAL, unfunded liabilities, we can't get out of that?
You would be terminating your contract by default.
Simply by not paying that.
Right.
So those are catch-up payments.
Well, they're catch-up, but they're required per the contract. They're towards unfunded liability, but they are, he would be in violation of your contract if you didn't pay it.
So they get to destroy wealth and we have to keep taking the punishment. Okay, great.
The definition of Calpers.
What a bunch of doofuses.
You know, one exercise that maybe, you know, Chris could engage in is we could print out, send him the actuals for, you do it line by line.
Account by account?
Account by account and do the actuals for this year, now that we're almost done with this year. And then give him the preliminary estimates for next year and go line by line like a zero-based kind of.
Give me light out of Beto?
In a coloring book with numbers.
You can have a coloring book and you can come back in the next council meeting and talk about every, every account you wish to delete.
I've got my.
I agree.
I've got a highlighter and a red.
Cut every last bit of fat out of the budget.
Fat? Asking an Oxford.
Be careful with your definition of fat.
We could cut the crayon budget down, you know? We could cut the staples down. We can cut the.
We're gonna reuse staples. Make your motion, Daniel.
We have trucks. We have, we have a whole, you know, enough to start our own business over here.
They sell for about $3,000 each, so.
Put that into the loan program.
Yeah, we can put that in the loan program.
Anything else?
That's it.
No, I think it's doing a good job.
Yeah, thank you.
It's tough to put together all that stuff.
Thank you.
It's depressing, but.
Awful subject, but yeah, thank you.
All right. I'll make the motion to receive and file and.
And give Chris his.
Chris's assignment of.
His assignment.
Reviewing on a more deep level the financial situation of solving.
Could we make a motion that he stays at home while he does that?
Let me get this straight. So you're being sadistic.
Oh, stop.
I'm making a motion.
You made a motion. I second it.
But actually, I like it cuz I'm masochistic.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mayor Prater Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember DeJernis.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Waite is still not with us. We have a forum.
I tried calling her twice and she still has not called back. Yes.
Okay, passes for O.
Okay, untied number eight, AB 1234 report outs. I think as usual, there's no events happening that the city would pay for the council to go to. So I don't think there's anything there.
No, I went to NSB CAG meeting, but that's it.
You went to NSB CAG meeting. What did they discuss there at a real high level?
A real high level. They discussed cost of living increases and hiring on new employees.
So during a time of crisis, they want to increase?
That's exactly right.
Pay.
And it was voted down and to be revisited at a further date due to my opposing such.
I don't even know why they put that on the agenda. Why would you put that on the agenda to raise pay?
I would agree.
When families are lining up to even eat.
I expressed my problem with that and they decided to push it to the next, the next agenda. They were hoping you wouldn't show up for the next one? Yeah, I think that's what they're hoping.
Okay, Robert, comments? Any comments?
The only comment I have, as long as it's still on the air, is that I know that I'm not an economist or a doctor. I'm just a guy who works in a lumberyard. But I represent the constituent, I represent the voters of Salving and I represent the residents of Salving. And so I'm getting nine to one saying, begging me to please open. That's where I'm coming from when I make the comments I do about getting the economy up and running, not all at once. But I just wanna go on the record as saying that and I was picking wrong words earlier. But I just, I represent people and the people that are talking to me want the economy reopened. Chris?
Well, I'm an economist and I played one on TV. No kidding. But it is a dismal science and unfortunately, everything that I read and see suggests it's gonna be worse than you think. And we're gonna have to figure out how to manage through this crisis. It's not gonna end when Newsom says, okay, we can go back to work on May 30th. It'll continue to drag on through the summer, the best time of the year for tourism. We're not gonna see those months. And I think unfortunately, the families of Salving and the community at large, they're gonna suffer even more. So I hate to be cynical or pessimistic, but I think the worst is still ahead of us. We haven't even talked about the impact that a big market correction would have on the psychology of people, tourists. I think that's the biggest problem and I wanna make this real clear. The biggest problem is the fear. We have to defeat this notion that if you get the virus, if you get sick, you're gonna die. That's just not the case. There's no science that suggests that you're going to die. I mean, 99% of the people who do get it recover. So the idea that we have to worry about dying, that's just an exaggeration. I'm not saying we shouldn't take this seriously. I just think that we're, we need to get over this nonsense as fast as we can and reopen. And then finally, I think people are already ignoring this and they're just going to about their life and saying, we're done with this nonsense.
Every weekend, you've seen it more and more and more.
Yeah, everywhere. I mean, for example, people are still doing construction and landscaping and the pool guy still comes and cleans the pool. It's like they don't, they're not listening to Newsom or the county.
There's people taking pictures on Copenhagen Street. There's people down in the green belt.
And no one's, no one's gonna come and arrest them. So I'm glad. I think that the American people are smarter than the politicians that we've elected.
Keep up the good work and we'll pull through it.
Thank you.